May 24, 2010, to order. First to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse us for about a five-minute late start here. We usually have closed sessions before we start at six, and we were a little bit late getting out of that, so apologize for people waiting a little bit. So with that, changes to the order of the agenda? Any changes from staff? Mr. Weiss? Okay. Report from closed sessions. Mr. Session, Mr. Ruben?
No reportable action from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, communications and announcements.
Okay, I'll start. First off, just want to announce another award for the general plan. The general plan received an award of merit for outstanding planning from the 2010 American Planning Association's Northern California Program. So congratulations again to the G-PAC and the staff who worked on that.
Who is the chairman of G-PAC?
Oh, you are. Some guy. And then, second of all, I know we're all probably going to thank the Hometown Day Steering Committee, Linda Tuchel, and all the volunteers who worked this weekend. Special thank you as well to all the service groups, the Lions, the Quanis, and the Rotary Clubs, who all had a pretty big event during this weekend. It was a great weekend, a lot of fun, and it just goes to show that, you know, volunteers can do a lot. So, that's it.
Mr. Ron?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to remind folks that for the June election, there is a dropbox for your ballot upstairs by the city clerk's office. If you're worried about losing your ballot or whatever else, drop it in the box. Nice place to go.
Okay.
I just brought with me the entomology report that we all get, and I did it because just to remind folks that we're getting into that part of the season where the weather is changing, and while these guys do a really good job of spraying, you know, public places or that sort of thing, where water is gathering, it's a good idea for homeowners to make sure that they take care of that on their property. If you've got buckets or other kinds of things that might have water in it, and mosquito larvae can grow in it, to take care of that on their own. So just a reminder to folks for that kind of management of that issue.
Good. Mr. Gruselli?
Can you finish? I didn't want to interrupt. Just to piggyback on Mr. Ahmad's comment, Election Day is June 8, and there are a lot of statewide issues as well as countywide issues, and people running for different offices in our county. And so I think it behooves us all to participate in the democratic process, and so mark your calendar for June 8 if you don't vote absentee. Thank you.
And I have a couple items on Saturday's edition of the Mercury News in the business section, first part of the business section. Great article about, titled "Startup Still Don't Know the Way to San Jose," but it talks about venture capitalist money and how it's flowing into the entire Bay Area. And San Carlos came in amazingly high. We beat San Jose. We had $291 million in 2009, which really represents what that means, is this is investment money, startup money, for companies that are located physically, startup businesses, San Carlos, that are trying to do the next pharmaceutical, the next computer, the next iPod game, or iPhone game, whatever it is. But just to give you a little feeling, that Mountain View, Redwood City, and Palo Alto, you know, they're all five, eight times our size, have about a half a billion dollars. And here we are at $291 million. So hey, hey for San Jose, and people like it here for lots of reasons. Residents do, but businesses do too, so that was a great article. And also, just one small item, just to give you a heads up, we're very proud of Green and what we do for recycling, and we initiated just in the beginning of May our Curbside Pickup. Good news is it's amazingly popular with our citizens, and we've surprised Curbside, the company that does it. So be patient, they're a little overwhelmed with all the emails and phone calls they got, but they know they're, they got quite a bit of enthusiasm from San Carlos, so be patient with them, and the process works very well. Mr. Moore, you want to add something on that?
I just wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, that, just to give you some metrics, and as you know, when we initially proposed this program, the council asked staff if you thought San Carlos would exceed 5%, and we already have. The original projection for the four initial cities was 1,400 pickups in a year. In two weeks, they did 800 pickups. So they are adding a second crew, and we're told that they will be caught up within the next week or two. They're pretty excited. They have never seen this level of participation in any of the cities, anywhere in the nation, for this program. So kudos to San Carlos and Bean Green once again, but we're on it with Rethink Waste, and we think in a week or two, we'll be back on track.
Mr. Moore, thank you very much.
Through the chair, anybody who wants to join for a cabbage patch after the...
And Mr. Grokot, you have one more item you said?
Yes.
Please. Counsel announcements?
Mayor Royce and I both attended the Belmont State of the City address that Mayor Wosniak gave, and they have some good news over there. They are not fighting with their budget quite to the extent that we are, but they also are going to be opening two parks here in the future, not too distant future. And their bike bridge has gotten approved, they got the funding approved, so they're going to have a bicycle pedestrian bridge that will go over Highway 101 at, I think, at Ralston, and it ends up at their, they have a park on the other side of the freeway. And it's been a struggle for them to have kids and moms and dads to not drive the car, but to be able to get over there either walking or taking a bicycle. So that's going to be in their future.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving on to item, agenda item five, public comment. Again, these would be items, you're welcome to speak on items not on this evening's agenda. So can I have, in this order, Brian Randall, and then Pat Bell, and Mary Jo Hoffman are the three speaker cards. So with that, Brian, welcome.
Mary Jo doesn't want to speak.
Mary Jo's on the other item.
On another agenda.
On another item, I'm sorry. Hi, Mary Jo. We'll wait. Two speaker cards. Mr. Randall.
Thank you. Gentlemen, it's good to see you all again.
Good.
Older, but no wiser, as you are still attempting to break up our excellent and proven fire and police departments. I did have the pleasure of going to Hometown Days this weekend. I went to the first, must be about 30 years ago now. Mr. Mayor, some months ago, you were offered a ride into our alcohol danger zone in a police cruiser on a Friday night. Did you or any of your councilmen take the police up on that offer? If not, I suggest you all go and learn to appreciate that our police are worth, our police are worth every cent. Do not just ask Councilman Klein tonight about his experiences there. Another point while I talk of our fire and police departments, have you all worked the graveyard shift as they do? And would you? Also, you really need to experience some of the grueling fire training. Speak to the man in charge, and I do not mean Mr. Moira, I mean our real fire chief. Thank you very much.
Great. Mr. Randall, thank you very much. Just a couple items directed towards me. I have gone to a couple of police ride-alongs, they call them, and I have experienced that. So just to let you know to participate in that process. Thank you, though, for the recommendation. Ms. Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I had my first hazmat pickup today, worked like a charm. They even give you a receipt to tell you what you gave them. And because I have been saving all this junk that I knew I shouldn't throw in the garbage, I had quite a lot. I filled up their bag, I gave them three TVs, fluorescent bulbs that I've refused to throw away for God knows how long. Anyway, I love it. And my neighbors, of course, pay no attention, they had no idea it was a possibility, but now they know. And I will be watching their trash to make sure they're throwing anything, the wrong thing in the trash. I'm with Brian about police and fire, as you know. What concerns me now is that I want this to be an open and above-board process, and I want it to comply completely with the Brown Act. I don't want to have discussions going on behind closed doors that ought to be out in the open. And the public should know and should be able to watch the discussion of whether our fire chief is going to represent San Carlos, or Belmont, or both, or the JPA. I need to, as a citizen, I deserve to know that. Does he represent us or not? I don't know, because it was in closed session. And that's not a personnel item, it's got nothing to do with anything that's allowed to go into closed session by the Brown Act. So I want, and I told the Fire Board, I am not keeping quiet this time, I am going to complain until things change. I have seen Brown Act violations at too many Fire Board meetings recently, and I'm turning them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? You'll be welcome to. Ready? Okay, well, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of council, staff, or the public asks specifically these items to, an item to be removed for separate action. With that, are there any items?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to move 6I.
6I? Okay. 6I, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I need the city attorney to advise me how we do 6C, because I'm not even supposed to be in the room for that. So do we do that separately, or how do we work that?
Yeah, that would be the way to do it, to remove C, and then during, when that item's being considered, you would leave the room.
Okay, well, you know, through the chair, if, not to move, I don't think we need to move C to the back of the thing, I can just step out here and if...
Why don't you start, walk in, and we'll...
I know, but I want to vote on the rest of them.
We'll have you back for the other ones.
I think you have to pull it out if you want to be able to vote on...
I understand, I want to pull it out, but the point is, I want to pull it out, but I don't want to put it at the back end.
Yeah, we'll talk about it right away. Okay.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of consent calendar items, 6A and B, D through H, and J through M.
Second. Okay, first and second, roll call.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
So Mr. Gruselli, if you could get out there, we'll have a motion for item C, and then come back, and we'll have a discussion on I.
Could you explain why I have to leave?
Yeah, Mr. Gruselli lives within, what, 300 yards, I believe, of some of this work that's...
500 yards?
500 feet.
Feet.
Feet. Hey, I was closer with my first answer.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar item 6C.
Second. First and second, roll call.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Absentee. Mr. Gruselli? Okay, what I'd like to, we have an item here, I'd like to proceed with that, have some discussion, looks like there's some items on 6I. This is an item, approval, reappointment of Steve Divney, Terry Shugart to the Planning Commission to a three-year term ending May 31, 2013. Discussion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I pulled this more just because we had a fairly significant discussion about reappointment of board members. These are good people, and they're doing a good job, but at the very least, what I would like to do prior to the reappointment is at least have them come back in and have a discussion with council, so that we can see where they stand. Mr. Divney has been on this board, I can believe he's coming up on seven or eight years. He started with a partial term, and now this would be his third term. We've actually discussed changing board terms from nine to six years. Ms. Shugart is filling a partial term, this will be her first full term, but I think for the benefit of the new council and what's going on, I would like to bring the incumbents in for a discussion. I'm not advocating opening up the process right now, but I would like to have a further discussion on this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly applaud Mr. Ahmad's comments relative to our new policy that we're going to be doing, but I guess I'm a little confused, are we going to, and I, you know, with all due respect, are we going to ask them how they, if they like tall building? I mean, I'm not trying to be cynical or farcical here, but what are we going to be talking to them about? Are we going to be asking them questions? Or, I guess I'm confused. If they haven't done a good job, I think people need to come through, or do, again, or do you feel that all the appointments, and again, I'm not being critical, I'm just asking, do you need, you want all the appointments on, from now on, we have to have a special meeting with everybody? Is that basically what your ideas?
I'm not trying to set a precedent.
Right.
But I do want to go through my...
What you want to go through, I probably am, but... Yeah, my opinion, you know.
But to the extent there have been decisions coming out of Planning Council that I think, at least from where I sit, have made me scratch my head. I would like to find out, well, you were in on this decision, how did you come to that decision? I don't have a lot of contact with the Planning Commission, or how they make these decisions. There are items that we want to talk about for economic development. We have new zoning coming into place that we'd like to talk about. I'd like to know how these people make decisions. And so to the extent, would we talk about previous decisions? Would we talk about where the future of San Carlos is? Yeah, those are things I do want to talk about.
Mr. Grokot?
I know we had the discussion last time, and at least my impression of it was more on the order of, hey, we would be talking about shortening the terms, and that's fine for, you know, people coming onto these commissions. I wouldn't necessarily apply it tonight to these two folks. And the second part of it is, with respect to recommendations that have come from the Planning Commission, perhaps that might be different than, you know, what, how I might do something, or any of the commissions. I mean, I see things from other commissions that I don't always agree with, but I appreciate that. I like having things mixed up a little bit, and I like to see advice that doesn't, you know, recommendations that don't necessarily agree with my point of view, because it helps me to think more critically about things and see another person's point of view. I certainly don't want a commissioner to rubber stamp the way we as a council may think about things. I don't even want them thinking to themselves, well, what's council going to do? And so how should we decide? Should we try to steer this in a direction that's going to agree with how we think council will feel about it? I don't want that. I want critical thinking, I think that's what I'm getting out of these two individuals. I'm happy with them. So I would not apply the things we talked about last time to this process right now.
Through the chair.
Yes. The way, since I pushed it to the forefront last time, the way I understood what we had decided, we decided we were going to discuss at a future meeting, shortening the terms, but that we weren't going to re-interview every applicant, or every re-up we were going to talk about if we had a particular issue with a, if someone, if a council member had a particular issue with one or so commissioners, they would bring it forward, and we would discuss it as a council. So what I would like to see with item I, I've received a fair amount of complaints from the public about Commissioner Shugart. I will not be voting to reappoint her, because I've also seen things at the Planning Commission meetings and reading them, and it's, I just, that don't sit well with me. I'm okay with reappointing Commissioner Divney, because again, in the same reading and listening, I'm quite okay with that. So my issue would be with reappointing Commissioner Shugart tonight, so.
Through the chair, just to clarify Mr. Grokot's remarks, and I want to put mine in context. I don't have any issue with a particular vote, or votes, that these commissioners have done. What I do want is to understand, how do they approach the problem? That's something I don't understand. They may look at something completely different from me, I don't have an issue with that, but I would like to understand it. If X is important, but I've, you know, I don't think about it on council, maybe I should. But those are some of the things that I'd like to see. I don't have a problem with a debate or, you know, differences of opinion, but how do you come to a decision is something that I would like to understand. And I think that is fair. I have not heard any complaints, so I don't have any issues with either commissioner. But again, I would appreciate that opportunity, but it doesn't look like there's consensus on this board to...
Well, through the chair, I don't have, if people have a specific problem with certain, you know, folks, I don't have any problem with that, I'd like to hear about it. But unfortunately, I haven't heard about it. And so, I mean, if there's an issue, then let's postpone this puppy for two weeks and meet it, and then whatever issues you all have, I'd like to have them in front of me, so I at least can study them or understand what we're doing, because to me, it's just, it's a bit too vague for me at the moment. I don't have any specifics. Or, or maybe, again, as Mr. Maude, again, respectfully, you want, you know, we did talk about the process, and maybe you feel this is the way that we should do it. So I just, I feel like I'm in a vacuum here, I have nothing negative against people, so I don't, and again, Mr. Klein has some information, perhaps, I do not have that. So I don't have any way to not vote for these folks, assuming they're doing a good job, and I haven't heard anything from staff coming to us saying, you know, we really have a problem here. Maybe there is, I don't know, you know.
So let me just, what I see, a little bit of what's going on, and I'd also like to satisfy Mr. Gruselli some information that I've heard about here. One is just for the public to understand, one of the things that drove our discussion two months ago was when we've interviewed for Planning Commission and Park and Rec, we've gotten 10 to 15 applicants, and all very energetic, very qualified people, and the theme was, we need to provide more opportunity. Nine-year term, three terms is too long, let's get more rotation and more opportunity for our citizens. The other thing that we agreed upon is that with the now moving to two three-year terms, it's not an automatic renewal, that if there are issues that come up, or discussions, or anything that a council member feels is important, we don't, it's just not an automatic six years. That's why we actually are doing this, we're actually voting to basically extend someone another three years. I am the liaison, we all have liaison positions with all the commissions, and mine is with planning. I served three years on planning. And with Ms. Shugart's appointment two years ago, I got very early on some input from citizens, from commissioner members, and from staff. There was a different person there, a different style, and so I paid attention to it. And one of my, you know, intents was to kind of follow it and look at some development and coaching and so forth to see what could happen. The input that I've gotten over the six months is pretty consistent, that I saw in the startup. And again, I've heard issues from citizens, from staff, from other commissioner members, and so if, and I haven't talked to any Klein at all, it sounds like we have another council member that has heard probably some different things, but to the point, I know that I can only speak for myself, is that I would not recommend the reappointment of Ms. Shugart for the second three-year term for this amendment, or for this item.
Well, through the chair, Mr. Rubens, if I'm doing something wrong, tell me. Can we postpone this item to the next meeting, and so information can be disseminated to the entire council? Because quite honestly, I have no basis for not appointing both of these folks to new terms.
You could, the council could vote to continue the item, and what I was checking with the clerk on was that because these terms expire on May 31, there'd be a temporary vacancy probably until your next, from June 1 till you took it up.
So we'd have a three-member Planning Commission for the first meeting in June?
Yeah.
Because they meet on the first...
That's right.
...first Monday. So on June 7, they'd be, can't we do a temporary extension for their terms?
I think the code reads, sets the terms of office, and I haven't, I can look at the code, but I don't think that it...
Can't do that.
...gets you the discretion to appoint for less than a full term.
If, just to carry it through, if we do not reappoint one or two, there will still be vacancies on June 7 then? If we decided not to reappoint, let's say, one of them or two of them, there will be vacancies on June 7?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody understands.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear a little bit more discussion from my other council members here. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in here if I might. Based on what Mr. Ahmad is saying about, you know, like to know how people think, that's a little different from what I heard the last time we discussed this item, which was more the type of thing that Mr. Klein's bringing up. If you have a particular issue with somebody, then you would raise that particular issue and, you know, ask for interviews and so forth. I do see a difficulty here that we're running into with this whole vacancy thing. If we're going to apply this kind of policy in the future, we need to apply it sooner, so we have time to interview folks and so forth. So we need to do that. And we're not, that's why I'm concerned about applying the policy to these two folks, because we're not, we're not up to speed on how we, you know, deal with the details here. Secondly, just coming back to my first comment, because I didn't complete it, if we're going to talk about how people think, and that's part of our reason for bringing people back on, then that's a whole different process than what we talked about last time. And we need to bring that discussion back, if that's what council wants. And thirdly, I am gravely disappointed to know that there's been complaints about some particular individual, and some of the council knows about it, and some of the council's in the dark. That shows to me either things are being said just via telephone or conversations that, one-on-one, and even if something, you know, something like that comes up, I know personally, if I, if I hear about something that has that kind of gravity to it, you know, I'm going to share it with the city manager, I'm going to share it with the mayor, and, you know, try to generate something that'll be in writing, so that it's disseminated to the whole council, because it, we act as a council, we don't act as individuals. And so we all need to know information as it's out there.
Mr. Rubens is trying to split the baby here. Could we reappoint tonight for, till June 14?
These appointments are in the discretion of the city council, so both members are on your agenda, and you could appoint both, neither, or one.
But what I'm saying is, can we appoint them for two weeks?
Oh, no, I don't...
Can't do that either.
I don't think you can.
Okay.
The terms are set in the code.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out a way, so you don't, I mean, if we don't appoint them, again, we're going to have a vacancy, and we may have one anyway. I mean, this, it may happen. I guess, as Mr. Grokot said, obviously, and I'm sure staff is aware, maybe we need to bring, obviously, bring these things about another month ahead, or a couple of weeks ahead, so that we sort of do it ahead of time. But that, that being said, here we are.
That's a great idea. Other comments here?
Before we...
What we wanted to hear?
Yeah, I mean, this, again, was why I brought this up two months ago, because, see, this is the decision we came to, was to bring up when you have an issue with a certain commissioner, in case you didn't, I, this is my only one. So people want more information, but we run into a Brown Act issue. I can't call all four council members and go, hey, guys, you hear this? Especially if it's on the agenda, or knowing it's coming up on an agenda, that becomes an issue, because that's me influencing a vote, and I'm not allowed to do that. That's why I wanted to have a set policy. But we chose not to do that, so this is the policy that the council asked for, and this is why I wanted a set policy, so it didn't catch anyone by surprise, we could talk about it out in the open, but now it's coming down to where we are talking about one or two people. And it makes it very awkward, I understand that, and I understand Councilman Gruselli and Councilman Grokot's need for more information, but it's kind of hard to do that without breaking the Brown Act when it's on an agenda.
I don't have as much problem with the Brown Act, believe me, I have no problem with, you didn't share anything with me.
Yeah.
I don't have that problem. Unfortunately, we're in a time where...
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I understand.
And I'm not blaming staff for that, but unfortunately, because of the way we're in, and so we just have to choose. We may just, it may just be that we have four or three or four commissioners on the June 7th meeting, such is life. So, I mean, it's happened, people are ill on vacation, that's just the way it's going to be. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands what we're doing.
I have a question for Mr. Rubens, if I might.
Mr. Ma, can I go to Mr. Ma's?
Sure, go ahead.
And you're the mayor.
Well, I'll yield to Mr. Grocott.
Mr. Grocott?
So, the question I have, just, this would be for the city attorney, in terms of Brown Act violations and so forth. If a council member hears about a particular commissioner, and then we either go to the mayor or the city manager and pass on that complaint that we've had, and then that's disseminated to the rest of the council through the city clerk, it's just information. Am I correct on that, or is there a Brown Act violation in that?
Information is allowed under the, to be disseminated one way, communications are allowed, but the, it's still something you have to be careful about, just the way it's disseminated. But that process you described would be an appropriate way to up the ladder and then, or to the city manager or senior staff, and then outward to interested parties.
Would be appropriate.
That would be appropriate.
Would be appropriate, thank you. Okay. If I may, to get us off the dime on perhaps one of these, I would move approval of the appointment of Steve Dibney to the Planning Commission.
Approval of Steve Dibney, sir?
Sure.
Hold on a second, Matt. Okay, first and second, Grocott?
Councilmember Maud?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No, yes, sorry.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
All right. Want to take another motion here?
So, I would...
Someone decides to do one?
I'm hearing Mr. Klein's complaint. I would like more information, but I think we could get that by the next council meeting. So, I would move that we postpone the item of, what's this person's name, I'm sorry?
Ms. Schugart.
Because I can't read. I have to do this sometimes. Okay, Ms. Schugart. I would move the, how do I word that, Greg? I just want to move it to the next council meeting.
Continue that.
Continue the item of Ms. Schugart to our next council meeting, and also request that staff provide us needed information.
Before we, can I have a little, we've got a second, I guess.
I'll second the motion.
Now, to discuss, this is more of a question for the city manager on how this would work. So, if I have a commissioner who comes up to me and complains about another commissioner, I just don't want this to turn into a schoolyard. Do I, A, tell you who told me, which I think would be a betrayal of confidence, or B, are you going to call all council members and go, this is the rumor I'm hearing? I mean, how does that even work?
I hate to get caught into that kind of hearsay routine either. I guess my suggestion to you is that if there is a concern, that you simply advertise the position, advise Ms. Schugart that she can apply for the position, you then talk with her, as well as with anybody else that applies for the position. That way, it doesn't become a personal attack on anyone, it is simply opening up the process for anyone that might want to apply for that particular position, which is now vacant. That's what I would suggest to you.
So, then the initial of disseminating the information, as we, what our city manager has just said, isn't really what is going to happen. So, I mean, we have to come to a decision as a council. Are we just going to take a leap of faith on each other's word, or what are we going to do?
And just to clarify here a little bit, I, again, I mentioned, I was alerted early on, there were issues, that's all I think I need to say. I've tracked it, I read agenda items, I talked to the commissioner meetings, I know how council meetings are going, the community development manager, I've had discussions and shared concerns with that person, because he's our main city contact. Mr. Royce knows my concerns. But I'm in no situation, nor do I have the style to go and blab to four other council members that I don't think, or that I have an issue with a particular person. My role is to listen to concerns from citizens, and from commissioner members and staff, and alert the proper people to try to make improvements to the process, and try to help and coach and provide that leadership to occur. I don't, I don't think we in council want to get into a personality of who likes who and get staff involved in that. This is the meeting where two council members have each in their own ways, I've just articulated my style, have heard concerns and issues, and my judgment as a single council member is not to reappoint.
Okay.
And so, that's the process. I would like to proceed with that process this evening and make a big project and put other people and commissioners in an awkward situation.
Well, then I would like to make a substitute motion then. Mr. Rubens, can I do that?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Which would then pick precedence over the one we just had. I'll make a motion, so we'll go up or down on this. I'll make a motion that we reappoint, reappoint Ms. Schugart to the commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a movement to reappoint, so this is given up and down of who wants to do it and who doesn't want to do it. And if so, then we'll go to, then if it's a negative, then obviously Mr. Royce's comments will come into play, and it will be open to whatever. So, because I just think this, this stuff, as Mr. Royce said, you can get into a Star Chamber type situation on this stuff, and I don't think that's right. So, everybody has to vote their conscience on whether they feel a person's doing a good job or not. So, anyway, that's the motion, Mr. Grocott. Thank you.
And you can abstain, I believe, Mr. Rubens, I mean, if you have no knowledge. I'm just trying to give a council member out, is that an option?
You could abstain, but that's not the point of my motion. My motion is upper-down.
That's right, okay.
We're going to reappoint this woman or not.
Make a decision based on the facts you have. You have some facts here.
Some people have facts, some people don't. Facts I have, I'm reappointing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So, I hear what you're saying, and I hear what the others are saying. And to zoom in on facts, if, I agree with the city manager, he doesn't need to be put in a difficult position. However, I would say this, to prevent, you know, this kind of, I'll call it a circus, for lack of a better term, that's going on right now, if somebody has a serious enough complaint about another commissioner, and you can, I mean, there can be a situation where commissioner's not doing their job right, or being rude to the public, or whatever it may be, those things do exist, and they can be a problem, and they need to be addressed. However, if something is of serious enough nature, it needs to be put in writing. And once it's in writing, then it is something that can be disseminated to the council. You're not talking rumors, you're not talking, you know, trying to libel somebody. And that's the point of putting in writing. If you're not willing to put something in writing, then you don't have a complaint. If you have a legitimate complaint, or a legitimate issue, you should be willing to be serious enough about it, that you're going to put it down in writing, and then it can be disseminated to the council.
So, I believe we have a motion and a second, and just since we've been talking, Mr. Griselli, I just want to highlight the motion again.
Make a motion to appoint Ms. Schugart to the, to the term, to, for the next three-year term.
And we have a second for Mr. Grocott, Grocott? Any other discussion?
Yeah, because I would like to put a clarifying remark on my vote that I'm going to do. There's a question here of what are we doing for the Planning Commission, and I view the role of city council as to approve the best people for the interest of the city. And to that extent, I have a doubt put in my mind. So, to that extent, I would, I am not going to vote for the approval with the idea that we should get this, and perhaps Ms. Schugart would choose to reapply.
Okay. With that, any other discussion? Grocott?
Councilmember Maud?
No.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Mayor Royce?
No.
Motion fails. So, that is through our consent calendar entirely. Moving on...
Mr. Mayor, through the chair.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Just so that I'm clear, there was a motion made to reappoint, and it failed. Is that correct?
Correct.
And therefore, we will have a vacancy if no further action is taken, and with the understanding of the council that we will advertise the position.
That's what I was going to get to.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubens, that other motion was moot, or withdrawn, or?
It was substituted.
Substituted.
Overruled.
Yeah. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Onto item seven. Reports to city council. Mr. Royce, any reports?
We have no additional reports.
Great, thank you. Okay, item eight, A, consideration of resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a one-year contract extension for economic development, redevelopment, and housing consulting services with Rose Nowe Spafic, I'm sorry, group through fiscal year 2010 and 11, sorry.
Good evening, redevelopment agency chairman and board of directors, Mark Suwicky, economic development and housing manager. Staff is recommending that the agency approve a one-year contract extension with Rose Nowe Spafic Group, or otherwise known as RSG, for economic development, redevelopment, and housing consulting services in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for a one-year term. RSG has been providing the city and the redevelopment agency with, I would say, exemplary consulting services to the agency and city over the last four years. Included in their scope has been detailed review of our redevelopment plan and financial projections, helping us figure out whether we could bond money, which we eventually did, creation and update of the economic development plan, preparation of two RDA implementation plans, which are required by statute, assistance with developer selection, negotiation, and analysis of the proposed Wheeler Plaza project, assistance with the Transit Village project, the Landmark Hotel site. We did a big update of our below-market-rate housing ordinance, and did a nexus study and an affordable housing impact fee, and RSG came through for us on all of those projects. We did say, two years ago, when we entered into a contract, that we would come back and do an RFP, but because we're in the middle of several projects with RSG, particularly the Wheeler Plaza project, we're deep in design and negotiations with the developer on that, and we've got a few other things that they've been working on hand-in-hand with us, we would like to continue with them. Under the municipal code, the city council and agency board can authorize execution, award, and execution of service contracts in excess of $50,000 without competitive proposals if there has been good experience with the, and satisfactory performance with the contractors. So, that's what we're recommending.
Okay. Questions? Staff?
Yeah, I just have one. Mr. Suwicky, I just wanted you to specify that this is all RDA funds, will not be coming out of the general fund, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Grocott, please?
So, the question I have is, I just want to make sure that this contract is essentially a retainer. And so, inasmuch as we're carrying the project forward, they get to bill against the retainer, or, okay, I'm getting, go ahead.
It's time and materials. If we're not doing any work, we're not spending any money.
Okay.
No retainer, there's no, it's, the, they provided us with a scope of services, but it's really up to, it's in our control whether we want to use them or not on projects.
So, well, okay, so, just so I understand in my mind, the $150,000 is a number out there.
It's a cap.
A cap, and we can bill, they can bill against that, and we pay as work gets done. But if the project came to a point where we said, you know, we don't want to move forward with this project at all, then it just, this contract goes away, we don't owe them the remainder or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Suwicky, in the, one of the paragraphs on page two, it says, this is followed by a two-year contract through the end of the current fiscal year for $150,000 per year. Was that the same as this, not to exceed both those years, or were they flat fees those years?
They were not to exceed $150,000 in each year.
Okay, and my next question is, how much did we pay each year?
We paid $148,000 last year, and we actually turned them off, if you will.
Okay.
Because we were near the limit. This year to date, we're at about $120,000.
So, we've got a month left. Okay, thank you, Mr. Suwicky, I appreciate that.
Great. Anything else? Got a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of resolution, RDA number... Resolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency approving extension of an agreement for services with RSG.
I'm not going to pronounce it.
Second.
Sorry, I just, I bet you're...
You guys.
Will you help me tomorrow on that?
I will help you tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, Director Ahmad?
Yes.
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Chair Royce?
Yes.
Okay, new business, item nine. We have four items. Just to give you a summary of each of the four here, one deals with the Arts and Culture Commission, B deals with Belmont-San Carlos fire budget, C is a job in Public Works, it's a new job classification, and last with, I like this, unruly gatherings, which is not this evening, by the way, so it's other places, we hope. So, those are the four items. We'll start with nine eights, consideration of amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24160 and 2.24180, eliminating the Arts and Culture Commission, and assigning these duties to the Park and Rec Commission.
Mr. Long, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. This recommendation is a change in the municipal code that would effectively dissolve the Art and Culture Commission and shift the responsibilities to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is directly correlated to the Y2 cuts, where the position of Recreation Superintendent was eliminated. The Recreation Superintendent has been assigned as a staff liaison to the Art and Culture Commission. As you can see in the fiscal implications, this is savings in time, staff time, that was dedicated to the Art and Culture Commission. It would fall probably under, on my shoulders to take on this commission, should the council elect to maintain the Art and Culture Commission. And it's my recommendation that if you do indeed elect to retain the Art and Culture Commission, that you do assign staff. There has been suggestions that they could operate independent of a staff liaison, but my recommendation is to not do that. So, I'm prepared to answer any of your questions you may have about this.
Good. Questions?
Mr. Long, do we have, we have an opening on the Park and Rec Commission right now?
That is correct.
And is it your, is it your thought, or perhaps plan, and that we would appoint someone possibly either from, well, not necessarily from the Art and Culture Commission, but there would be, whoever applied for that opening would have some information on that, or, in other words, so there'd be some representation, I guess, is what I'm getting at, in the Park and Rec Commission?
Yes, that's the intent.
Thank you.
Okay, to the chair.
Question for Mr. Long, maybe, I don't know if this will be Mr. Moore or Mr. Royce. We folded the seniors commission a while ago, right? So, and that was folded into Parks and Rec, correct? So, Mr. Long, in the year that you've been here, how often has the Parks and Rec Commission brought up issues solely relating to seniors?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Although I'm not quite certain about the history, and Mr. Moore may be more familiar with that, as being acting director at the time. From my understanding, the senior advisory commission actually decided to retract themselves from oversight by the city, and they went ahead and created their own board that's more like a committee than a district commission.
I think, through the chair, that Director Long is correct. When we talked to the senior advisory board, and it was a similar discussion, again, about reductions in the Park and Rec budget, and how could we stretch our staff hours further, when we talked to the senior advisory board, it was their feeling that they were most interested in providing input to staff and not to council, and that they didn't feel that they needed to meet as often as they had in the past, and they felt pretty strongly that if they could just get together from time to time and chat with the senior supervisor, that was about all that was needed, that to have formal meetings and to make recommendations to council really didn't happen all that often, and even making recommendations to the Park and Rec Commission didn't happen that often. And so, that's kind of how we proceeded on that basis.
But since then, it has ceased to happen completely, correct?
My understanding is that they don't have formal meetings and minutes and that sort of thing, but again, the door is open, so to speak, for them to work with staff if they choose.
Okay.
Just through the chair, so that I can clarify, I mean, the position that is vacant, the thought is not necessarily to, we could certainly do this, but not to dedicate the position to Arts and Culture, it's simply the available, should the council choose to put someone in that position that has that particular persuasion, then that would be fine. But we are suggesting that the work program, the Arts and Culture work program that was considered by the council previously be incorporated into the work program for the Parks and Recreation Commission, so that the duties therein would be the responsibilities of that commission. And again, just to reiterate what... And again, just to reiterate what Doug had indicated, when we brought forward the position cut, the Y2 cut of the parks, second-in-command, if you will, of that department, and eliminated that position, that position was assigned as the staff person for this commission. And so, when we eliminated that position, we advised the council at that time that our recommendation to you would be to discontinue the Arts and Culture Commission in concert with the elimination of that position. Mr. Long has already assumed many of the duties that, that that position is responsible for, will be assuming those duties as, as July 1st rolls around. Certainly, if the council chooses to keep this commission, we would indicate to you that it would be our recommendation that we continue to staff it, that Mr. Long or somebody else on his staff be, be assigned to the staff of the commission. Certainly, it diminishes our ability to, to do other things, but if that's the council's desire, we would prefer to do that rather than to leave it unstaffed. It is a formal, recognized advisory body of the city, it operates under the guise of the city, the Brown Act is applicable to that commission, we must notice the meetings, we must do minutes for the meetings, we must comply with the Brown Act. And, and so, if we're going to have the commission, we ought to treat it as a real commission and do our best to staff it. I'm just here to indicate to you that to do that will diminish our capacity to do other things within the department.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Actually, Mr. Royce mentioned the work plan. Director Long, can you speak to the work plan and how it would be folded into the Park and Rec Plan?
Well, the work plan was approved by council, and I believe that, was it the last meeting?
Yeah.
And it's a, a list of items that they're looking to accomplish over the next year. So, they would actually be incorporated into, as part of the work plan for the entire Parks and Recreation Commission, which would probably mean that they would take on each, each commissioner is assigned to a particular task, they would probably, you know, double up, or perhaps take on three different projects for that particular year.
Okay. Questions?
I wanted to run through some of the things, my understanding of what they oversee and get your, you can tell me if I'm complete or not. History museum, they deal with some of the things that the history museum does.
Yes.
Concerts in the park.
Yes.
Sister City program.
I, the mayor may have a better answer than I.
Okay, so, scratch that one. Public art policies?
Yes.
And display of public art, or, display of art that residents do and gets done at the senior center through watercolor groups and so forth.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
You know, we have members from the commission here, if they would like to speak to some of the things that they're, they're involved with, but I think that that outlines it pretty well.
Pretty complete. And so, that would be enveloped into the Park and Rec's commission?
That's correct.
All those items.
That's correct.
And the weight of the things that the Parks and Rec Commission are dealing with today, whether it's heavy or light, you feel like they can take these on and, and still do the other things that they're doing?
Yes, and especially if we look at this as a strategy for one year, and in years going forward, we adjust the strategies as necessary according to, you know, the bandwidth we have for the Parks and Recreation.
Okay, and then if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Weil, if that's all right, because we did a similar thing with Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we enveloped that into transportation, renamed the, the organization, I think, Transportation and Circulation Commission?
That's correct.
So, how are you finding that to, to go, and is, from your estimation, is bicycle pedestrian issues being addressed readily enough with the elimination of the commission, but bringing some of those commissioners over and so forth, whatever, you know, the whole thing that we did there?
Well, I was not here when the commissions were combined, so I don't have a sense of what it was like beforehand. My observation of the Transportation and Circulation Commission is that it is balanced. In this case, the municipal code states that two to three members must represent bicycle and pedestrian interests. So, there's a structural design to the commission, and it's two or three out of seven. And, so, it's, it, it seems to work well, that they, they do look at all things in context.
Very good, thank you.
I have a couple speaker cards, actually, three, I'd like, we'd like to hear from the public, and then we'll get some further discussion going on. Mary Jo Hoffman, starting off, and Pat Bell, and Steve Aquilier, if we could have your three in that order. Mary Jo, if you want to spend just a little more, and when you come up, if you could include some additional comments, give you a little extra time, just satisfying if Matt, Mr. Grocott missed any other items on these questions, please include those in your comments, it'd be great. Thank you, welcome.
And also, Steve Aguirre is here, he's our chair, so, certainly if there's anything that I can't answer, hopefully he'll be able to as well. So, certainly in terms of those groups that we support, we actually do support Sister Cities, Megan Mahar, who is actually terming out as part of Sister Cities and reports back to the council, or, commission, excuse me, I wish it was the council, but we do support the Fine Arts Association, the Museum Board, the Villagers, the Heritage Association, Sister Cities, Children's Theater, At Time San Carlos Together, we have worked in some capacity with them, Concerts in the Park, and Peninsula Art Council. So, almost, well, it's nine separate entities that are either in San Mateo or in San Carlos, we represent, we support in some way or another. That, that support has changed as our budget has changed, obviously. Last few years, we haven't had a budget, but we have provided grants to a number of these agencies or associations through the years, as well as we look for non-monetary ways in which we can lend support. And I think probably one of the disadvantages in the way that we've chosen to support the associations in San Carlos is really to support through them instead of marketing ourselves, and so that probably has worked to a detriment in terms of the work that we've done throughout the years. In terms of my public comment, I'm sure you probably have some other questions, but in terms of my public comment, I certainly want to address the fact that Donna Jempoli-Dillard, who is the name that goes with the title of superintendent, has been a wonderful support to the council, or, to the commission, I'm sure she's been a support to you as well. But she has been wonderful. We really are disappointed in the loss of that position, but we are very disappointed in the loss of her. We do, you know, hope to carry on without her, it will be hard, but we will carry on, but I did want to acknowledge her. I am concerned about the fact that the Park and Rec Association has enveloped already the senior advisory committee, I know it's taken on some different forms, they also are intermediary with the youth council. If you add on our additional nine associations that we support in one way or another, that makes for a very hefty load. In addition, what we are looking for is to be that advisory commission to the council if and when, and we hope that it is this year, that the master arts policy and plan are, are worked on and supported and approved. I don't believe that the Park and Rec Commission, at this point in time, has the intellectual property, or the capacity, or the history that it would take to really move that through in the next year or 18 months. So, I definitely would consider that as you're making your decisions. And certainly, the director has acknowledged the fact that we are willing to stand alone if need be, that we are willing to support ourselves. I don't know, you mentioned earlier in the, in this meeting, that you're looking for opportunities for commissioners to move around, that you wanted to limit the terms to six years so that we can kind of spread the wealth. Well, folks, you're kind of taking away from the well, if, if there's no commission for them to serve on, there's very limited ways in which citizens can volunteer their time to help the city in a government capacity. So, I certainly would recommend that. So, therein lies my, my comment, I know that there's a couple others. I don't know if you want me to step aside, and if you have any other questions, I can be of your...
We'll call you up if there's any other questions. Thank you very much. Pat, Bell?
I would echo what has, what Mary Jo said, I, you can't roll everything into Parks and Rec, you know, especially if you're only going to have five commissioners. When you rolled bicycle and pedestrian into traffic, you left, you allowed it to be a bigger commission, and I know that the mayor wants to cut that one down to five as well, but you cannot have five commissioners doing the work of three different commissions. It, it's crazy. And I, I know that Mr. Royce wants it staffed, but some very good things have been done in this community that were not staffed. The Natural Resources Task Force was not staffed, came up with a 44-page report that was very impressive, I remember Mr. Grocott speaking about it on the night it was presented. And that, that task force has gone on to become San Carlos Green, which hasn't had anybody holding its hand at all, and it's doing very well, thank you. So, I just, you're not, you're not giving them any budget. Let them keep going, they're adults, they know what they're doing, they don't need a staff person to sit at, at every meeting. If you're going to roll them into Parks and Rec, then you have to make Parks and Rec bigger. But I would keep arts and culture separate, you have all these nine groups that they are creating cohesiveness in, and that, that's not going to happen if it goes to Parks and Rec. It's going to go to Parks and Rec, and the Parks and Rec commissioners are going to have too much to do, and they don't have the history, they don't necessarily have the passion. When they were appointed to Parks and Rec, they weren't asked to do arts and culture. So, leave them alone, let them do their jobs.
Thank you, Pat. Steve, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Steve Aguirre, I'm on the Arts and Culture Commission right now. And first off, I want to say that I completely understand the economics that has led to the recommendation by staff, and I, I do want to say that I empathize with, with Doug in not wanting to take on even more duties, so I understand that. But a little background on, on our commission, we, we only meet four times a year now, and that's a reduction of six times a year that we did not too long ago. And we have 90-minute meetings, we generally don't have a raucous, any raucous meetings that prolong that, so, we usually stay within that 90-minute timeframe. The commissioners that we have, each of them is a valued professional person with a background in one aspect of the arts or another, and I believe that we willingly give professional consultation when asked, and, and we do so because of a passion that we have for the city. And not to say that other folks in other commissions wouldn't have that, but we are focused in the arts and culture parts, and so, it, it's our speciality, and it's what we do well. My reason for being here tonight is not out of any sense of political self-preservation, we're all volunteers for many multitudes of things, we're busy doing lots of things, but I do say that each of us, to a man, if we were to say, we don't want, we don't want to think that we ourselves are trying to prolong ourselves in a position that is not popular, we would each gladly step aside and let someone else take our arts and culture positions if we had a confidence that they themselves have that, that passion that we have. So, in conclusion, what you have in the five commissioners that are there is, is free consultation services that are provided willingly and happily to the city of San Carlos, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak on this agenda item? Jerry, please come on up, you could fill out a speaker card after. Jerry Emanuel, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and members of our attending San Carlos audience. I was on the Arts and Culture Committee before we were, they were staffed, and we functioned for many years without a staff liaison. I'm not here to present any position, except that it would be a great loss for this community. It would be like losing, in my mind, a base, two baseball diamonds. It would be like closing forever the youth center. There's an element of hope for the future by maintaining the Arts and Culture Commission. It does not draw from any revenue from the city, it inspires people to follow in a niche that's not allowed for, and any other aspect of the government here. And every city that I see on the peninsula, and almost every city in California, has a commission that deals with art history, and they have different names for it, but they do function, and then many smaller cities than ours, you can go up to the Sierras and find smaller towns functioning with that. It's an important thing, it's very important, it's as important as people playing soccer, even more so. We don't have a playhouse here, we don't have a theater for adults, we have one for children, but things of this nature could be in our horizon. We've had, at one time, we had the Circle Theater, it brought in people here to see good theater, performance, lectures, we don't have the facilities now, but maybe sometime we will have that. So, I'm not here, any more arguments for the defense of keeping it, I, I believe it strongly, and I think you shouldn't make a decision tonight. As far as I know, they were notified last Thursday, I was there at the meeting, there's not enough time to, after decades of tradition, to just demolish it so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Anybody else? Okay. Let's see, is that... Okay, thoughts from council?
Chair, I'm, I'm the Arts and Culture Commission Liaison here on the council, I attended, I've attended the last couple meetings, and Mr. Aguirre was correct when it's not a raucous crowd, I generally am the only public member at their meetings, but that in no way is to say what they're doing is not important. I just don't think it's as, it's not divisive, it's not controversial, it's just for the well-being of the city, and most people don't feel the need to attend something when you know five commission members are going to do what's right. So, I've attended some other meetings, I attended the last meeting where Mr. Long gave his staff report about closing the Arts and Culture Commission. I heard a lot of great ideas come out of the Arts and Culture Commission members themselves, talking about ways that they could cut back on staff usage, possibly doing their own minutes like they used to do in the past. I know it's been staffed since, I believe it was 1991, the staff report said, but things have changed, and we've kind of gone pre-91 levels anyways, so if we do need to pull back a little bit, I'm sure the commission members would, would be more than willing to step up and do more work. I know our city manager says if we keep it, he'd like to keep it staffed, well, if you can do that, that'd be great, but I don't think I can vote to close this commission because of all that it's done and all that it's going to do in the future. I think in this current economy that we're in right now, we can't lose any more commissions, we need these volunteers, they don't just serve on the Arts and Culture Commission, as has been said, they serve with other groups, we have a member on the Museum Board, we have a member on Sister Cities. Mary Jo Hoffman, who spoke here before, was vice chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and she got on that committee because she was an Arts and Culture Commission member. So, I just think it would be really short-sighted for us to close another commission, and I don't think I can support the staff recommendation.
Mr. Grisilli?
You know, I, I certainly have to commend all the folks that are volunteers of any commission, certainly Arts and Culture folks. I think Ms. Bell actually made a point, and maybe I'd like to sort of piggyback on that, she indicated some folks in the, it was a group of folks that worked on the, I'm losing the name of it, the two, Natural Resources, thank you, I'm sorry, Pat, Natural Resources, and that has somewhat morphed into San Carlos Green. And I think what we're speaking about here is we're speaking about whether it's an official commission, or it's... commission or it's not an official commission. And I think the work that they do is incredibly important, and I think that's really where, in my opinion, where we need to go here. We are cutting everything. We are looking at every single thing on the table. We are, as you mentioned, going back to 1990 things. We, we're not trying to get rid of volunteers, we're just trying to get rid of, not rid of, should we say, that's not the right words, change the way we do business. And I don't want to eliminate the folks who want to work on art and culture, but I do want to eliminate, and I do follow the staff report, and I do agree with Mr. Long and with staff, that we don't have staff folks to do it. Natural Resources morphed into San Carlos Green. Let's have the Art and Culture Commission, move into the Arts and Culture Committee, whatever. We change the name, but it's not an official group that we have with the city, therefore we don't need to staff it. And folks get together, I mean, there are all kinds of volunteer groups in this town that work together, that don't have any kind of a staff person working with it, and they do great work. I'm not trying to eliminate the work, I think we just need to change the way we do business. So, and the official part of it, I think, needs to disappear, in my opinion. And we still keep it. If folks want to get together, that's great, but we aren't going to have an official group that has to report back or that needs staff assistance and things like that. So, that's where I'm going to vote for the motion, but would recommend to dissolve the Art and Culture Commission from an official commission of the city. But in that motion, if I make it or if I vote on it, I want to make sure that we emphasize we do not want to get rid of it, we hope the folks can get together and still work as volunteers with the city. So, that's where I stand on this.
Mr. Grocott?
So, I have a question before making a comment. How many Parks and Rec Commissioners do we have?
Five. There's one, one day.
Well, we currently have four. There are five that are assigned to it, yes.
So, I would like to hear some discussion. If we're at four, we've got five from this other, now it'd maybe be a little heavy the other direction, but even before Pat Bell made her comment about expanding, like we did with the Traffic and Transportation Commission, I was thinking, you know, especially if we're just talking about, you know, doing this temporarily, perhaps for a year, maybe two years, maybe three years, or whatever, that we just envelope these five that we have into the Parks and Rec Commission, now you've got a nine-member board, and they can deal with Parks and Rec issues, they can deal with these issues. I think these things, you know, need to be addressed and dealt with.
Through the chair, Mr. Grocott, there's only three members on the Arts and Culture Commission currently.
Oh, there's three?
Two just termed out, so.
So, there's three left?
Left, yes.
Okay, well, that's great. Then we could still have some openings on Parks and Rec, because we could, if we said Parks and Rec was going to be a nine-member board, bring these three over, now you've got seven, you still have openings for two more Parks and Rec Commissioners if you want to make Parks and Rec a nine-member board and give it the job of, because it sounds to me like some of this has to do with, well, staff, you know, it's the budget number of whatever staff support is. But otherwise, I'm really reluctant to eliminate this, and it's getting very difficult for me. You know, we eliminated a program that involved a lot of volunteers and pushed it over to the school district with Healthy Cities. We did the same thing with Carrying Cupboard. We've got all these things where we got, you know, this is a good town, we've got good people, they volunteer for things, and the only reason we're eliminating is because of the price tag associated with staff. And I think that's wrong-headed and unfortunate and not the direction we should be going. So...
Actually, worse?
If that's my motto, I'd be on my way.
So, I...
I think that's a sign, Mr. Griselli.
So, I would like to hear some discussion on that, and if, or perhaps I just make the motion, if you like. I'll make a motion to add, in fact, I'll go ahead. I'll just make the motion, and then we can have some discussion on it if we get a second. May I do that?
Can we, Mr. Grocott?
Or do we, then I would be recommending that we forward, that we push this item out so that you guys can give us a recommendation and that nature.
So, Mr. Grocott, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Well, first of all, you can make a motion at any time. What I'd like to get is discussion from all five Council, just so everybody's able to learn from each other and see where we are. And then I think that's a good time to motion, but you'd be welcome to, too, if you feel that strongly.
But just to clarify, Mr. Grocott, what was your motion going to be?
Well...
What's it going to be, it could be, maybe?
Yeah, what's it going to be is that we, instead of dealing with this ordinance, this is why I think we'd have to do this at a future meeting, I would like to see an ordinance from the city staff that recommends increasing the Parks and Rec Commission to nine members, and that we automatically envelope the three that are left from this commission into Parks and Rec, then we would have, the motion, the ordinance wouldn't have to deal with all these details, but the ordinance would simply say that we increase the Parks and Rec Commission, we eliminate this one, history and culture, and, is that the right name for it?
Arts and Culture, I'm sorry.
So, we eliminate arts and culture, but at the same time, we increase Parks and Rec. And then it would be the discretion of the Council to take these three members, envelope them into Parks and Rec, which now has a larger opening than just one. It has, you know, four, I guess. So, that would be my motion, Mr. Mott.
So, would you like to make that now, or hold on?
Hold off, because I think Mr. Rubin's got it.
Mr. Rubin, is there a comment?
Well, I think the motion, in order to have staff look at all those issues that were raised by Councilmember Grocott, we'd need to re-agendize this and continue it essentially. And tonight, I mean, so the choice tonight is to, you know, review what you have before you, or, and then possibly continue it if you want to give us further direction.
Okay. Mr. Mott?
Mr. Mayor, I'm torn. I've been reticent to eject commissions in general. When the Senior Advisory Commission came up for review, what I did and what at the time Barry Weiss did was went back to the seniors and said, "Okay, what do we really want?" Well, I made the comment that we're at a point in time where we need all brains on deck, and the Arts and Culture Commission is, some of those critical brains we want on deck to that point. There may be advantages to this commission, if they're not an official commission, that they don't have to deal with Brown Act, they can meet a bit more freely. There may be other ways to work. One challenge that Ms. Hoffman brought up was sort of a branding challenge with the Arts and Culture Commission. They're doing this great work, you know, the best work nobody knows about, so we need to bring that up. I would probably concur with Mr. Grocott that I would, I'm not in favor of just eliminating these folks, but I would like to hear some other ideas of how we can start to fold this in. And I have to admit, I'm a little uneasy with that, because it kind of feels like we're trying to put a size 10 foot in a size 8 shoe. You know, we're dealing with something that's quarterly, it's not taking up much money, I'm kind of stuck, but I, if there's an opportunity for the Arts and Culture Commission to come up with alternative methods for them to continue their work, I would like to see those here as opposed to just flat-out eliminating them as the resolution states.
Okay. Well, this is one of those topics where actually public comment and staff's report, even though there's two different decision points, I think we're very close in how we think and what we value. I think staff is coming at it from a point of view of, it's not a budget saving, it's actually, to me, more of focusing Park and Rec on some other priorities. There's a lot going on. If I was to ask Doug what he spent his time doing this last month, he's working on a lot of things he's never worked on over the last couple of years. Here's all this new activity. And we, as Council, have to be very careful, because for most of the people at that table, they'd only have a half-job if we didn't ask them for things, or ask them for reports, or have them do studies and so forth. We create work, which is time, which is money, and so what we are delegated to do is to really be sensitive to staff and just keep doing all the same things. And so, I, very much for an idea, give them more work, but I'm also a firm believer in being fair to our staff and be fair to them and not overwork them. What's, I think Mr. Griselli had a good point, thinking about the way, how we do business. I'm kind of mixed on this, because my heart's with arts and culture, and yet if it's, I think someone talked about, Pat Bell talked about, or someone said there was no, oh, Jerry, Emmanuel, there were no mittits or recordings or anything. Well, that's not how you do business nowadays. It's very formal, and it's costly. It's Brown Act, there's mittits, and they're put out and they're approved, and it's very formal how we have to do all this stuff. So, maybe some other model of how still save some of the work that's being done with a volunteer group may have some place right now to actually make that change. The other interesting thing I look at is our commissions should really complement kind of our business plan, I would say. Our business is broken up into safety, which is police and fire. We have regulations, which is kind of planning commission with community development, and I call this thing called quality of life, which is Park and Rec, your organization, Mr. Long. And being on Arts and Culture for several years, it's also a quality of life issue. In fact, most of the things that the membership of our current commission talked about were community events, and organizations had put on community events. So, when summer concerts started, it started with Park and Rec. The mid-years, it was heavily weighted that more of the resources were from arts and culture. Now, it moved back to Park and Rec. There are things like Halloween and holiday decorations, and they, and tree lighting has moved. Tree lighting used to be cultural arts for most of the years. Now, Park and Rec does it. So, you could see similarities. The Goblin Walk, which has nothing to do with arts and culture, it's Park and Rec and Chamber. But all of these events are great events, they're really important. That's my main point. So, we need to keep them going. How we do it with these organizations, I see some leverage with the commissions of Park and Rec and Arts and Culture working together, because they're working on, most of their work are on these, a lot of these community events, and then they're setting policy, too. And most of these events occur where? Most of them are in our parks. Some of them are downtown. So, the idea of eliminating, no. The idea of working with a different business model, I'm sorry, I'm not helping with a vote here, because I'm not sure how I'm going to vote, or some sort of, you know, merging, I do think commissions are most efficient at five. Here we are, Council, five, we spent 45 minutes talking about an item an hour ago. If there were seven of us or nine of us, how much time would we be spending talking about that item? I think five is plenty, but having a mix of Park and Rec and arts and culture skill sets, I think that organization goes very well. And then we also need, my last point is, there are areas that arts and culture have been working on for the last several years, I believe, and that is, you know, they never have any money, and most cities do have money. There are development fees. When you build a $3 million building, you put in $200,000 for artwork in front. We don't have those kind of policies. Well, that maybe shouldn't be arts and culture, because you have the talk, but you don't have the bite. And the planning commission has the bite, because they're the ones that are creating the ordinances on how developers put buildings up. So, we need to rethink about some of the policies and some of the things that you're doing, and there are other commissions that may be able to get things done, too, just because of the nature of what that goal is. So, I'm sorry, I'm going all over the place here. So, with that, I'll just close and turn it over to the rest of Council here.
Other thoughts?
I have a question for staff, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Long, since you staffed the Parks and Rec Commission. Mr. Grocott brought up an idea of possibly bumping that up to nine members. If we were to give you four more members, wouldn't that essentially add a lot more time onto your meetings?
It could. I've worked with five-member commissions, I've worked with seven, and I've worked with nine. It just depends on those people who are members and the directions that they've been given in terms of workloads. It can be untenable at times, and sometimes it can be very efficient. So, you know, I have really no preference between the three. I've worked effectively with all three sizes of commissions.
Okay. And then my other question is, if we take this Art and Culture Commission workload and move it over to the Parks and Rec Commission, won't that add more staff time?
Yes, it will.
So, I don't see where the savings of staff time comes by closing the commission and just moving their workload, because you're still going to have to do that staff work.
Well...
It's just the four meetings, essentially, then, right?
It's the four meetings, and it's actually this transition year that we're having. I mean, we've got, we're committed to those work plans this year, and we're going to see what we can do about those. But beyond that, you know, the work plans will be strategically planned, that we won't bite off more than we can chew. This year, we're kind of through this transition year.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll start making a couple of motions here, so maybe we can move on in this, and maybe there won't be any seconds. I make a motion that we dissolve the Arts and Culture Commission, and this is the first, I'm probably going to make another motion after this, assuming, but dissolve the Art and Culture Commission and make it basically a voluntary group that, I still want to have it around, but I sort of, as Pat said, or Ms. Bell said, to morph into a volunteer group completely. So, that's my motion, if there's a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Through the chair, just, the action tonight is the introduction of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Okay.
And the other part of your motion might be some further direction to staff to work up a program.
Okay. Okay, I'll amend that to say that, further staff looking into making it a voluntary organization, then, is that appropriate?
Yes.
That's my motion. Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion?
The motion was the exception of the resolution with the idea of...
Introduce the ordinance.
Of introducing, we introduced the ordinance to dissolve the commission.
But turn it into an informal...
But turn it into an, but have staff look at turning into an informal group.
Well, it still wouldn't be a city commission, it would just be reporting back to you and perhaps facilitating that transition, maybe, is the direction you're trying to get.
I really apologize, you've confused me completely with the legalities of this, so I want to eliminate, dissolve the...
Yeah, so that's introducing the ordinance.
Number two, I want volunteers. How do I put that in words?
Can I jump in here first?
Any way you want, yeah.
Second. I guess I would use an analogy here, because I think, I see where Mr. Griselli is going. When we had the Natural Resources Group, which became San Carlos Green, which Ms. Bell referred to, and we also had the other group, which morphed into San Carlos together, we had a transition plan, where there was a year where they were working with the city, and then they were on their own. And it sounds like that's where you're going. Is that correct?
No, it isn't. I don't want to have a transition plan. I'm trying to eliminate, trying to eliminate, we are talking about dollars and cents, and I apologize if I get, maybe I'm getting grouchy at 8:30. We have got millions and millions and millions of dollars here, and I'm sorry, we've got, we've got, maybe Mr. Long can say it, it's a body. It's not a matter of, well, it's just staff time. It's a body. We don't have a body to staff this. So, my motion is to dissolve it and try to make it a volunteer group, whatever words you want to throw on there, that's what I'm trying to do. So, give me some words, if I can do that. If I can't, then I won't, then I won't make the motion.
Well, here's, you have an agenda item to introduce the ordinance amendment, which will, in effect, take care of the first part of your motion.
Got it.
The second part, I think, we don't have it agendized. We can bring that one back to you.
Okay.
As the, what do you have in mind for volunteer? I mean, it could be volunteers that the city solicits, or it could be completely independent volunteers that the city would facilitate.
So, in other words, the second part of it is to bring it back to us to talk about.
Yes.
Okay, fine. That's my motion. Is there still a second?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other thoughts here before we vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Grocott, please?
I'm going to put a competing motion on the table, I guess, and that is simply to continue the item so that we could at least draft a, I guess, a competing ordinance that would consider increasing the size of the Parks and Rec Commission to nine members.
Second on that? Okay, so let's go back to Mr. Griselli's motion in a second. Discussion, if not, Grocott? Is everybody clear what we're voting for? Okay.
Councilmember Mott?
No.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
I tried. It was a shot.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recommend that we continue this item with the specific direction to staff, that I'd like to see a transition plan.
I don't know. Could you be more specific about this transition? Could you be more specific about this transition plan?
Either. A transition plan could be...
Could be, my way.
As Mr. Grokot stated, expand the Park and Rec Commission. That could be one. Another one could be you get spun out as a volunteer group. That could be two. But a transition, and I'm willing to accept that there, you know, this should have a finite time, at which point there will be a different way of doing business. But a transition plan, I'm looking rhetorically at the arts and culture commissioners to say that they should be involved with this to make certain that their position to the stakeholders are protected.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Second?
Some discussion.
Thoughts? Yeah, some discussion. At some point, we can talk about just leaving it as it is. So if this one doesn't pass, I'd like to see us discuss that. So that's it. But I'll wait till we get this motion going.
Through the chair. I suppose another thing we could throw in there, you know, I suggested nine, but maybe it was, maybe it would even be seven because you could at least interview these folks, there's three of them. You'd have, if, you know, there's four on Parks and Rec right now, you'd have three openings, maybe you apply all three of them, or maybe you apply, you know, you just open it up.
My understanding is the motion, Mr. Maude, is more general than that, let the staff come back and make a few recommendations on that.
Right, they could recommend seven, they could recommend nine, yeah, exactly.
So that, you have a motion and a second? RoKo?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Okay. We're always so close, aren't we? Not usually. Maybe the ones that voted yes and no are close too, I don't know here. Okay, let's get on to 9B. Consideration proposed 2010-11 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department budget and freezing of the city of San Carlos contribution at the FY 0910 budget level. Mr. Moore?
Let me make some introductory comments and then I'll turn it over to our two fire commissioners and the fire chief. As you know, under the fire JPA we have with the city of Belmont, we have a so-called weak JPA format, which means that major decisions, which would include the annual budget and also budget amendments, have to go back to each of the two parent agencies, namely the city of San Carlos and the Belmont Fire Protection District for what's called ratification. As the staff report indicates, in April, an initial budget was prepared and it had a sizable increase, 15.2%. The four fire commissioners asked the fire chief for some budget reduction options, which were provided a couple of weeks later. And at the fire board's last meeting, all four commissioners on a unanimous vote, both from San Carlos and Belmont, recommended to both parent agencies approval of the budget as amended. As you'll see in the transmittal memo and the fire chief's memo, the budget as recommended to you now is slightly reduced from the original budget and constitutes a 13.2% increase. The other key features of this budget are that it is a 12-month budget. However, the fire board members, as part of their motion, did want you to see the final several months, if the potential wrap-up of the fire JPA takes longer than 12 months. There was some extensive discussion at the last fire board meeting speculating how long the wrap-up might take, whether it was nine months, 12 months, or longer. And also, there is some detail in the fire chief's memo about all of the reduction items, just so you have a full set of options in front of you. And with that, I'll turn it over to our two fire commissioners and also to Chief Frye, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, well, Chief, do you want to go or do you want me to? Okay. Just to give you a little background, we went into, we discussed as a council during our budget meetings to freeze the contribution to the fire budget. So that froze us at 6,000, or 6 million, I wish it was 6,000, 6,292,394. And due to the formula, Belmont actually, their contribution dropped 40,000 or so. The chief brought us an initial proposal, which spent about, I would say, 700 out of the $800,000 worth of reserves in the first year, give or take.
Yeah, about 650.
Yeah, around there. And all four fire board members sent that back asking to find some cost-saving measures so we didn't have to spend that large part of the reserve. So the chief brought us about 272,000, I think was the number, worth of cuts. And there's some changes in there, but that's what we were given at the time. We approved those cuts. We moved $75,000 from capital back into the reserves on the understanding that each city is on their own for any major improvements to the fire departments, or fire stations. And then we did a little creative accounting with our, where is it? Our retiree medical expense. So we are going to pay, we're going to save $225,000 until the last day we can possibly pay it. If we've exhausted our reserves, we will use that for operation costs and go to a pay-as-you-go. But if we have the money, we will just, we'll send it in on the last day. So that, you know, it came out to about $500,000 worth of savings if you include that accounting trick. If you don't, it's much lower than that. But we unanimously approved it. I think this is the best we're going to do, so let's just move on. I don't know, Chief, if you have anything else to add to that. I know that you're going to want to clarify some numbers in regards to the truck.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, members of the seat council, Doug Frye, Fire Chief, Belmont-San Carlos Fire. We did submit this all back to the fire commission a couple of weeks ago and then through changing some of the numbers in regards to the truck financing and the costs associated with that, the numbers actually went from 227,000 to 287,000. And then with the additional reductions that Mr. Klein discussed from that meeting the other night, it does push it up into the 500, $500,000 range. The one impact that we probably need to make you aware of is that we did lose the funding for the ladder truck, the company that we had lined up to do the funding for that backed out based...
The financing.
The financing.
Not the funding.
The financing for the, well, to fund the balance of the...
Right, but when you say funding, I'm thinking we lost the fund that gave us a whole bunch of money for it.
No, no, we still have the fund. It's the financing to balance out the fund. To, which was to get a discount on the ladder truck upfront. And we lost that based on the dissolution process. So we've been searching for another potential person or companies to see what there is in the way of financing. We don't have that information back yet, we've been waiting. And so at this point, we backed that reduction of 5% out of the budget and did the full cost of the truck. Now if something comes around between now and before we take delivery of that vehicle, then we may get some sort of a discount within that, but it'll certainly be less than the 5%.
Chief, in a clarification, that 5% was around how much?
About $50,000.
So when we found the lease mistake, essentially the best way to put it, that there was an actual lease payment in, and that gave us about $60,000 of savings, and we, so we netted about $10,000 extra, right? In savings.
Yeah, well, the idea was we would have made two payments instead, and now it would just be one, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Maude, any questions, I mean comments from the fire board?
Just that when people hear cuts, one of the things that the fire board very specifically did was that they wanted to look for cost savings in areas that would not affect service levels. So the service personnel and how we're operating still moves forward. And the big push was actually to move some more monies into the unrestricted reserves that we would have some additional discretion toward. And that's what we've done at this point. And again, this is a unanimous resolution, unanimously passed by the fire board. We would bring that recommendation back to this council.
There's so much within this that's unknown that we wanted to leave some flexibility within that for us to anticipate if we lose personnel, we have increased overtime costs, other components that come along with that that we really can't anticipate. The board did ask for me to get back with them some sort of schedule of things we need to take care of and some of the impacts that may occur through that. And I'm hoping to get that at the June meeting for the board to review.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Mr. Grokot on the report?
So, yeah, one question, two questions. The estimated overtime then currently in this budget is what number? And I'd like to hear some comment on what was alluded to regarding the length of time for dissolution, what that is.
The overtime number, we left at what it was for the, this current fiscal year right now, which is about 1.4 million. And the reason we left it at that position was it does give us the cushion because we currently are fully staffed. The organization is fully staffed and so we're anticipating not having the increased costs and overtime of vacancies that we had to deal with. But again, with potential retirements between now and the end of the time and some other potential issues that we're not clear on, potentially increased sick leave use, disability, those types of things. It was felt that we could keep the overtime, we should keep the overtime at the current rate. And then if there's, it's not as much use in there, it'll just be that extra to put into the reserves at the end of the fiscal year, next year.
And that reserve number again is?
Right now, it's about, what we're projecting is around $500,000. And then there's a carryover from this year, which is about another 150 or so. So roughly 650 will be at the end of the year. And then based on the activities that occur, it could be, it could be a little bit higher, it could be a little bit lower.
Reserves would be.
Right.
The reason I'm asking about the dissolution period to know what some of the discussion was is because if we draw down these reserves, you won't be in a position to be able to budget for overtime. You know, what you're saying now is that you could budget for overtime at the current rate in this budget. You draw down your reserves during this current year, if you use the 1.4 million plus, start getting into your reserves, then if, anytime we have leftover, if we have six months leftover and we need to do reserves or need to do overtime, how are we going to do it?
Through the chair, just not to interrupt you, Chief, we haven't had a discussion at the board level yet and the board asked the chief to bring back in June a dissolution schedule. So, I mean, no one knows how long that's going to take, but the chief is bringing together a staff report where it's going to list out what we have to do and we are going to talk about a schedule. But as of now, it's, what, 16 and a half months till the 18th month?
Yeah, and let me make one other point, which I think will probably, may help address Councilmember Grokot's question. You may wonder how we're able to increase the fire budget even 13.2% and still freeze the San Carlos contribution and lower the Belmont contribution. And the answer to that question is, we're spending reserves. That is the difference. So by definition, this budget does spend reserves, which I think is part of where you're going.
Yeah, that's exactly where I'm going.
Through the chair, if I could understand, as I understood, if the overtime is the same as last year, as you indicated.
Correct.
But last year, we didn't have a fully staffed group.
Correct.
So that's why there's a built-in...
I know.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you understood.
I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry, just thought I'd mention it.
Because actually, what I'm looking at, just rough numbers, were 15.5 is the budget, 11.8 is the contribution between the two cities. That's a difference of 3.7 million. I'm supposing that the, so of that 3.7 million, you got 1.8 million is coming from, I don't know, you tell me, where's the 3.7 coming from? That's, I'm seeing something in here probably in fees and other income.
We do have about another...
Hazmat.
About another million dollars in fees, hazmat fees, the paramedic fees, the truck is in that mix. There's a number of other items that fall within that. We are fully staffed, so that does bump up that number a little bit more. It's the transfers that go between back and forth in the accounts. We had an increase in the retiree healthcare component that went up a little bit. So there's a number of just unexpected costs that went up. I mean, we anticipated and plus the salary increase for the personnel.
I'm not, don't get me wrong, Chief, I'm not trying to grill you here, but again, I'm looking at that 3.7 million and I'm saying, where's that money coming from? So some of it's coming from reserves, some of it's coming, is unaccounted for in here because it's the fee structure that you get from permits, from hazmat and so forth. And that, you're saying that's about a million dollars?
Correct.
Is the fee portion.
And then another 1.2 million is the truck piece that's in there.
Okay.
The ladder truck that's in there.
So 1.2, one, that's 2.2.
And then there's other, the salary increases for the personnel, the increase in OPEB contribution went up this year. And then there's funding that's been set aside for, within the budget, for potential termination payouts for personnel that may be leaving during the course of the year. And a lot of that was best guess, based on where I anticipated personnel that would be leaving, that are eligible to retire, what that cost would be for them to leave the organization, a number of different things that are within that.
I hear what you're saying about, so those are budgeted, but they're not in these numbers? Because here again was what I'm saying.
Well, you're talking about...
You have a 15.5 million dollar budget. You've got 11.8 million coming from the two cities, from their fire district and our city. So you're 3.7 million short on revenue. About a million of that revenue is the fee structure.
Correct.
So now you're 2.7 million on revenue.
Another...
So where's that 2.7 million in revenue coming from?
1.2 is the ladder truck.
Is the ladder truck.
There's increases in the PERS component and the OPEB, which is the...
But those are expenses.
He wants to know where the 1.5 is coming from. Where the one, to clarify what Mr. Grokot's saying, there's 1.5 million where he wants to know where's the money coming to pay that.
Well, about 600,000 is coming from reserves, 600,000 to 700,000 is coming from reserves. The other is increases in costs of programs that we did not anticipate. Salary increases for the personnel. And if you recall, the budgeted amount you gave me was frozen from last year, from this year to next year.
Right.
So in order for me to deal with salary increases for personnel that were already budgeted or already approved in the MOUs and the other increased costs, that's where those come from.
Okay, because I can, I know where your next question's coming. So you had 1.5, Chief, and now you took 700,000 from about reserves, 600,000 to 700,000. So we, there's about 800,000 where Mr. Grokot wants to know, and you've explained it, it's coming from salary increases and OPEB and stuff. But where's the money coming to pay that?
Out of the reserves. Out of the reserves that we have, will have in play this year. Some of it is going to be in the financing of the truck, the grant that we received for the truck. All those things are, that will be coming in at other points within the budget that are shown as revenue and also they will be shown as an expense.
However, with the truck, we were still going to owe 750?
About...
And the grant covers a good portion of it.
Yeah, the grant covers about 700, so about, a little less than 500 on that.
500.
But we have to get it, we have to, we needed to finance the entire piece of the truck and be able to pay it because we have to have ownership of the truck.
Sure.
Have paid for it and then we apply for the funding from FEMA to pay that down.
Yeah. But after FEMA pays it down, we still have, we're still sitting there owing 500,000.
Correct.
Correct. And that's the part we were going to finance and the price of that just went up because we didn't, maybe, potentially.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, I don't think the reduction or the benefit that we'll get by prepaying will be as much in, as months go on as it was currently.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Sorry to be so tough on you, but...
Any other questions?
So can I ask one? And again, I don't have a problem with, again, approving this on how you're proposing the fire board move ahead, but Brian Morris, Mr. Morris, and then, you know, you used the word reserves three or four times here. Please bear with me my accounting 101A example. Set of financials, you have your operations, which is generally your profit and loss, you have your capital investments, and you have your balance sheet. And of course, generally what you spend is what your budget is. You spend, your budget is merely a plan on what you're going to spend. You also budget for capital and capital is what you spend, but it does something unique where most of it gets put on the balance sheet and it's depreciated or amortized over on your spending, your P and L. And then you have your, your balance sheet, which is your cash and your reserves or retained earnings. Okay. Well, in my concept of accounting 101A is equity or reserves doesn't really get impacted. It all gets impacted through your, your P and L and your capital. So what we're doing is we're saying that, hey, the spending isn't kept constant, we're actually spending more. And of course, why we're spending more, that deficit is going to come out of reserves. But we are balancing to the rate we pay because we're taking it from reserves. So my question is to the board is, do you then say that you are freezing spending or only freezing funding? And is that an issue? Do you understand?
I completely understand where you're going, Mayor Royce. What we, and I'm not going to have an answer that you're going to be happy with, we are freezing our contribution. That's it. We did, we did do some cuts, about 270, give or take. It's not really much on a $15 million budget, but we are freezing the contribution of the City of San Carlos and spending reserves.
Okay. And that's what we're satisfied with?
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're clear.
If we weren't in the dissolution process?
In the funding, okay.
I think it would be an issue.
Okay.
But we are in the dissolution process, so let's, at this point, it's, let's just, this budget is good enough, let's get it and let's go.
Well, that's why I felt I'm comfortable with it. I wanted to distinguish the spending versus funding. Great, thank you.
And I agree 100% that if we weren't in that process, it probably would have been a totally different budget that you would have been looking at.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Grokot?
I have a question on this, the truck. When, if everything goes according to plan, when do we take delivery on the truck?
Just after the first of the year, probably late January, early February. We do have a penalty clause within that, delivery of that. If we don't get it within the 12 months of the, when we place the order, then there's a hundred dollar a day impact that the company pays us until we take delivery and accept it.
So we've got June, July, August, September, October, November, December?
Six months, seven months.
Seven months. Chief, I saw the, what the guys call Big Orange out running around the other day. Why?
The Red October, yeah.
Why?
The tiller truck that we currently have is in having the ladder tested and serviced. It's an annual thing that we do, takes a few days, and on top of that, we're doing some, just the routine service before the summer.
Okay, on that truck, we had an axle go out and we had transmission or something go out? We spent some money on that thing?
Not on the, not recently on the ladder truck, on one of the engines we did. We lost the transmission in one of the engines, about $30,000.
We had some axle problems on the truck.
We did, and that was all covered under warranty.
It was covered under warranty, okay. How much was it?
To get the repair, it was about $15,000.
The warranty had not covered it.
About $15,000 on the axles.
The thing I'm concerned about, quite frankly, is two things on this reserve. Number one, doesn't take much for, you know, if, we got six or seven months till we get a new truck. And if something goes wrong, you know, I've, that's why I asked the question, so we, I've seen these vehicles go down. And then if you don't have a reserved vehicle or you have to, you know, use Red October, it can get expensive. And now your reserves just went down even more. And even after dissolution, the reserve, whatever's left in reserves after dissolution goes to the two mother agencies. And now we have a fire station, two fire stations, and something occurs there, where are we going to get that money? I am really disappointed to see the reserve policy that Mr. Grisilli and I, along with the board members from Belmont, put in place and built up over the years to be a healthy reserve policy, get chewed away because of this dissolution process and potentially leave us in the red when we get down the road.
Okay, so through the chair?
No, can we move on here? Comment, please?
Yep.
Okay, Pat Bell, have a speaker card, please. Hurry up, come on, we need to move.
I just wanted to make, share something that happened at the last Fire Board meeting, which is that Mr. Klein had talked to the chief about doing this in nine months or 12 months or whatever, and they were going on discussing that. And Mayor Wozniak said, wait a minute, you sent us a letter saying 18 months. And if we need 18 months, we will take 18 months. So I don't think you can assume that because you want to wrap it up as soon as possible, it's going to be wrapped up as soon as possible. Because Belmont can afford to keep going and Belmont may just choose to keep going for the full 18 months. That was the sense I got from her at that time. So don't count on saving money by wrapping it up early because you can't do that, you know, it takes two to tango. And the other two don't sound interested.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what you need here, not a resolution, just our basically agreement or approval or formal vote, or what do you need?
Can I, does a resolution?
That's your resolution for Fire Board, isn't it?
No.
No, that's the city resolution.
That's the city's resolution?
Okay.
Can I bring up a point, Mr. Mayor? Just, I know you want to get this done quickly, but Mr. Grokot, he does bring up a good point where we are spending reserves. We are reversing a reserve policy that the previous Fire Board had set. And Mr. Grokot, you can feel free to send us back in there, we'll fight for more cuts. We brought what we thought was the best we can get, but I don't, looking at my fellow Fire Board member, I'm willing to go back in there and fight for more cuts and to get more reserves, but I truly believe with, trying to remain as civil as we possibly can, this was the best we're going to get. But if you want to send us back in there, we just need the council to tell us that. We need council direction. I'm not going to go in and wage a prolonged fight without council direction on that, so.
Any interest here? Ready to move on?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of resolution number 2010 dash?
Forty-five.
Resolution approving and ratifying the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department budget for the year 2010-2011 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, first and second, Grokot?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes, Councilmember Grisilli.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to make a point?
Yes, I did before voting.
Can we start again, well, I mean, put that on pause. Mr. Grokot, I'm sorry.
So I just want to explain my vote because I'm going to vote against this. And my vote is not that I want you to go back and rework it. You've done as much as you can, but I'm voting against it because I hate to see happen what's happening, that reserves are getting spent down the way they are. There's some, as I look at this, there are some holes. I'm not pleased with it. And if nothing else, I'm not pleased with the whole direction of dissolving this department. And so I'm voting no, almost as a protest to the actions that are being taken to dissolve this department.
Okay, so I do just remind everybody that we are voting on the motion as read. Christine, would you start that vote again, please? Thank you.
Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Thank you for bearing with us all out there. We have 9C. This is consideration for adoption of a specific public works supervisor job based on some work changes and so forth. Mr. Mulley, want to take us through that?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This item is the creation of a new position in our public works department that would be funded by the sewer fund, so it's not an impact to the general fund. The position's called a public works supervisor and it comes out of a, it comes out of the Bay Keepers settlement agreement that the city was sued and settled. And the terms of that settlement were to enhance some of the maintenance programs related to the sewer system. This class specification, the way we put this together is the way we've put together all other class specs in the past. We do research and look for what the industry standard is, what's been written and done in other cities, been vetted by our Public Works Director, had an opportunity to look at it. We went out and did a comp survey to get some initial data on how a position like this is typically funded in other cities, brought that to the City Council in the last closed session, got direction from the City Council. The salary you see, you see before you in the staff report is based on that direction we received a couple of weeks ago. In addition to this public works supervisor class specification, there are two other class specifications attached. These are existing class specs. The public works superintendent, which supervises this new public works supervisor position, and the senior maintenance worker, which is an existing class spec that would also report to this new position. Just making some minor modifications, updating some language and reflecting the new supervisory relationship within this class, classification series. There's no impact on those other class specs in terms of financial impact to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm sure the Public Works Director would be as well.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of resolution number 2010 dash?
Forty-six.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, establishing a new pay schedule for certain city employees mid-management group.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion, Mr. Grokot?
Well, again, I probably need to explain my vote. This was a closed session item and during closed session, I raised concerns about creating another layer of management, if you will. I didn't feel like, despite the Bay Keepers ruling, that we necessarily needed a position like this and something that could have been done with existing staff and the, and the job duties they have. So I'll be voting no against it. And having said that, I don't mean any disrespect to our Public Works Director, who I know worked hard on this and developed it and so forth, but I just didn't see that it needed to be done in this, this manner.
Great, thank you. Grokot, please.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Hey, 9D. Get in there. Consideration amendment, San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 9.32. I know that one well. Unruly gatherings. Mr. Rubens?
Thought we were going to call this the Klein Clause. Tonight, tonight on your agenda is an amendment to our existing Section 9.32, also entitled unruly gatherings. Historically, that, the existing ordinance was drafted about 20 years ago to deal with primarily loud parties in residential neighborhoods. Through this, with the Chief of Police and Commander Robbins, we identified a potential amendment to this code to deal with a growing problem of unruly gatherings at businesses and, and other areas of the city that might need some attention with what amounts to administrative fine program. We don't have a comprehensive administrative fine program. This is the only one in our current code, which is basically, it's not criminal, it's after notice. People who have unruly gathering that's prohibited by the ordinance would receive that notice and if there was a, under the current ordinance, it says a second response, but the new ordinance says subsequent responses within 12 hours would subject persons who participate in such a gathering to be assessed a fine with a minimum of $100. Instead of going to criminal court, where it's like a ticket for an infraction, this is an internal process to the City of San Carlos. So if someone wanted to appeal such an administrative fine, they would go through the city's appeal process at Section 1.25 of our code, which is a appeal process that goes to the city manager and then ultimately potentially to the city council. That's how these work. That's the way you avoid a, going through the general court process. This does have a provision in it that the city's not waiving the right to pursue such offenses that might be measure up to the level of being a criminal, citable offense. But having this administrative process is another tool that the city, city staff, the police would have if they were faced with something like this. We, the staff and I feel that it's a deterrent. It's worked fairly well in the loud party realm. We think it's going to be another tool for the police to be able to deal with businesses that aren't being responsible and managing the noise and nuisance aspects of their business, primarily bars and restaurants. And it would also enable, if the bar or the restaurant, in acting responsibly, people leave their, their premises and they're out in the street, it would enable the police to deal with those situations. We don't have that ability right now. So that's in a nutshell what we're trying to accomplish with this change. It's, it's similar to what other cities have. I took a look at Belmont's ordinance. They also have subsequent gatherings after notice. It's, it's very similar to what we currently have, but just adds a health and safety element to it, creates the ability to have multiple citations within a 12-hour period after notice and provides, we believe, a pretty good deterrent when, when such a fine, that civil type of penalty might occur. So that's in summary. And the chief and Commander Robbins are here if you have any questions of them.
Okay, questions from council? Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Rubens, so it's a civil fine, you indicated that. If, let's say Joe's Bar has a problem, then probably, it could be that Joe's Bar would be cited, could possibly be.
Potentially, yes.
And, and there might be, and then would the individual, individuals, so to speak, that might be the unruly people, would they also be cited? Could they be cited?
They could be cited. They would have to get, each, each one of those unruly people would have to get a notice.
A notice. You're saying 12 hours, so in a way, it's, it's, we're going to warn you, at 10 o'clock at night, or let's say at 11:30 at night, we go to Joe's Bar and we say, hey, you're making too much noise, got to keep it down. In effect, probably at 11:30 in the morning, 12 hours later, it's not going to be a problem. So when in effect, you're, you're saying, if you come back at 1 o'clock, then they're going to have a problem.
That's right.
Okay, so that's what the 12 hours comes into this. What about if Mr. Smith has a party at his house and things are going, getting a little out of hand? Does it work the same way? Will, will Mr. Smith possibly, could he have also that situation on private situations? Private parties?
Yeah, and that's, there's really no change for the private party, except now it's, instead of a second call, it's subsequent calls. So potentially, there could be more than one fine in, in one 12-hour period.
Right, but right now, if Mr. Smith is having a party, there could be a criminal situation. Could be.
Could be.
But, but there's no civil.
No, no, now there's a civil fine. No, there's no change to that. Now we, we charge a emergency response.
I guess I'm confused and we're talking about a bit, so it's more already orchestrated toward business?
We're expanding, we're expanding that concept to include businesses and individuals.
Okay, from, so it's already in homes. I'm sorry, I apologize. So it's already in homes?
Yes.
So now we're, we're moving into the business side. And in effect, I mean, to cut through it all, what we're really looking at is, we'd like the businesses to police themselves.
That's absolutely right.
In effect, like you said, a deterrent.
Absolutely right.
That's what we're trying, we're trying to accomplish by this.
Yeah, yeah, what could happen, if a restaurant has, regularly has large crowds, they, they might hire, in order to avoid administrative fines, they might hire more staff.
Understand.
And they might implement some policies that would prevent the spillover effect.
I get it, okay. I just, again, thank you very much for the answer.
Mr. Klein?
Okay, I have a couple of questions and if these should be directed at the chief, just let me know. The first one is, so you come out, you give the warning and then you come back, it's $100. What happens if you come back another time? Is it $100 again?
It'll be $100 again.
Okay, so I, you know, I'm, I'm in.
Or whatever the current fee is. I think it's a little higher.
I'm in favor of that, but I would like to see an escalating fee because I know from personal experience, and I did a ride along, but unfortunately, I did a ride along on a quiet night, so all of this is from personally being downtown. I've seen our police officers respond four times in a night to, to an establishment. And if each time's $100, that's $300. That doesn't seem like a.
I, I think the fine is, the $100 is the minimum in the ordinance and that gives the council discretion if they wanted to change this or not charge. When you do your next fee resolution, you could theoretically modify the response fee for this, but under the current, currently the way the ordinance is worded, I think it's $160. It's designed to be a cost of response.
Yeah.
So that's in your fee resolution right now, the cost of response.
Okay.
So we're covering, we're covering the cost. That's the way it's currently worded. I didn't change that part of it, so we could bring it back with, with a graduated penalty, but civil penalties generally have to track the cost.
Cost, okay. And then my second question is, is it always a verbal warning or is there a chance to just go to a fine? Say we have an establishment that has passed its capacity, which creates, you know, a fight breaks out and, and the police respond, do they get a verbal warning for that or can we just immediately find them? Do they get a verbal warning for that, or can we just immediately find them?
They wouldn't be, they, they would, we'd have to give them a warning to implement this ordinance, but whatever other laws that are out there, whether it's a regular nuisance, if we wanted to do a civil abasement action in court, file a lawsuit, we could still do that. This doesn't prevent us from doing those types of things. If there was a crime committed that was a citable offense, that could happen, and if, you know, we're going to have an, I think the Chief and I and Commander Robbins have talked about an outreach program to make sure that everybody's aware of the new program, and that's why we're bringing it forward now, so that it'll be in place this summer, and we can get the, once it's introduced, the plan was to start that education program.
Okay.
Mr. Klein, just carry on on that thought. So because it's civil, the warning's kind of a requirement? And is that what you said, or?
Well, I think we're trying to, that's the, the ordinances I've seen all have that, and we've historically done it that way. The difference is, to do the civil, we want to make sure, especially with people who aren't the owners of restaurants or bars, if it's just someone out in the street, we want to be, have an element of fairness here. If you don't shape up, you're going to be, you're going to get a fine, administrative fine. That is, and because it's broad-based, it applies both to residential neighborhoods and to the businesses, we thought it was best to keep that protocol in place, to have the warning. I suppose an ordinance could provide a circumstance where you might impose a fine without the warning, but we think that having the warning there is going to give the establishment the chance to respond.
Okay. Well, maybe I just share a thought on that. I think, you know, our officers, you know, are professional, and they know, and they have a latitude already to warn or to cite with, with what's called a normal criminal or traffic ticket now. So, you know, they are the best judge, and to me, always having to do a warning creates a level of administrative cost. I mean, they have to fill out a report and actually give it to that person. And to me, well, yeah, that may make sense in some situations, but when you show up at Joe's Bar and, you know, they know what's going on, they could say, hey, here's the fine without a warrant. So I just, I maybe, if.
Well, we have a pre-pun form.
If the Chief, I'd be interested a little bit on that. And then my other question to the Chief and maybe to you is, and I have friends, maybe one of them's in this room right now, but unruly gathering, can it be one person? I have some friends that make lots of noise at night. Why is it two or more? So those are two questions for the Chief.
Well, with respect to the first question, the best response I might have, might be to just to kind of quote the city attorney again, it is, with respect to the warning on the unruly gatherings, it does appear to be somewhat, from our perspective, of a fairness issue. With, you know, we do have discretion to cite or advise, but with respect to unruly, it's a subjective interpretation of a neighbor or an offended party. And you might, for example, have low-tolerant neighbors, and Councilmember Klein might have high-tolerance neighbors, and so it would be not fair to, so by us being able to come out to you and say, look at you, you've had noise that's offensive, we're going to go ahead and warn you, but the next time. And then in terms of the one person making a lot of noise and doing a lot of, you know, damage and stuff, we have other things that we can do with that, with it's just one person. There's, if it's that bad, there's disturbing the peace type of things with one person, depending on how it's doing, but it's easier, I think, to fold this issue under the unruly gatherings. We've had the unruly gatherings before, and we were able to just kind of fold this under that tent.
Okay, thank you. That's the questions I had. I'm sorry, anybody else? Mr. Grocott?
The first question I have is just in terms of policing. Yeah, I can, I'm struggling with the idea of fining people. It looks almost just like a, you know, revenue thing. And yet, you know, the police are out there anyways, and they're doing their job. Is this that much taking them away from their job is part of my question? The other part of it is, how often do the police, you know, you have segments of the city divided up, right, and each officer's assigned to each part? How much do they go into these establishments anyways, just to make their presence known, maybe sit down at the end of the bar or something and have a cup of coffee, or, you know, measures like that?
Well, in terms of the first part of the question with respect to whether or not it appears to be revenue enhancement kind of things, actually, what typically happens is when we get called out to something like that, we usually send two officers, both uniformed, they'll show up, and they'll warm the party, and they'll give them a piece of paper that says, look, you've been warned about this gathering, and if we have to come back, we will, and you'll be fined. And then what typically happens is, we never come back, because they don't, they just stop doing that. We rarely have to actually fine people. And I would suspect that that would be the case here, although I'm interested to see how, what happens in the bars during the summer. But typically, it's very, you know, that part is very effective. And I'm sorry, I lost your second question, Matt.
Well, the second question was, you know, this, the reason we're seeing this is more to do with the commercial side than the residential side of things. At least, that's what we're hearing. So on the commercial side, what we're really talking about is restaurants and bars, or, you know, restaurants that have bars associated with them. So in an officer's typical patrol in the evening, do they go around to these establishments and just make their presence known a little bit? Maybe sit at the end of the bar and have a cup of coffee when they want to have a cup of coffee, you know, use that time effectively like that, or?
Yeah, our officers are very good about doing that. They're very good about going through these bars proactively before any, in fact, just about on the weekends in the summer, I can pretty much guarantee you, they will be there every weekend night before anything happens, somewhere around 9:00 or 10:00, just to say, I'm here, I'm around, how are you doing? They know who the people are and what's, and that sort of thing. So that works out very good as well. And the other thing, too, in terms of the incentive to, to use this program to stop the unruly gatherings, the unruly gatherings can sometimes actually expand into something much worse. That's why it's important for us to have this tool and this leverage. For example, a group of people get together, and they're being noisy at first, and if we can get to them before things get out of hand, that can prevent other types of crime. And when I say things get out of hand, I mean, for example, urinating in public occurs, that's offensive to people. We have fights that occurs from these groups, that's obviously offensive and dangerous and a public safety issue. So by addressing the unruly gatherings before they expand into something more, it's just a good tool for us in that regard.
And then I just have a question about this, similar to what Mr. Grisilli was saying. Having difficulty a little bit with, you know, you show up at an establishment, especially because of what Mr. Rubens said about the process and the appeal process, and I have a question about that as well, but it's, because we're just making this a fine, it's putting the police officer in the position of being police officer, judge, and jury all at the same time, it seems like, because you're now having to decide, well, do I cite the owner of the restaurant, or do I deal with Joe and Jack over here who are being unruly? Who does this fine go to? You have to decide that, or your officers have to decide that. So that's what I mean by being judge and jury.
Yeah, I understand. And I think, I think from, you know, I think the best way to address that is, is really, to an extent, our officers do that all the time. You know, they use their discretion all the time. They come into a domestic violence dispute, and they have to take a look at these two parties, and they see who is the primary aggressor, even though they both have marks on them. They've got to sort it out. Our officers are trained to sort it out. And so they'll come onto a scene, I think, you know, I know our officers are fair, they're good, they're going to get there, and they're going to sort it out, and they're not, and I think what they'll do is not pass on something like that fine to somebody that really doesn't deserve it, or doesn't rate it, or wasn't involved, I think is.
And I understand what you're saying there, Chief. I guess the thing I'm struggling with is, your officers do their work, but then on the flip side, like the situation you're talking about, domestic violence, that person gets hit with a, you know, a crime, now they go before a judge or jury, and they get it worked out. Either they're guilty or they're not guilty. In this case, now we go to this appeal process, and I have some questions about that, because you're not going, if you get this citation or whatever it is, this fine, you're going to go where with it? The city manager first, and then if you don't like his decision, you'll go to the council?
That's correct.
Okay. And do you have, do you have to pay for that process, or?
It'd be our normal appeal process, under 1.25 of our code, which.
I don't know what that says. Is there a fee involved?
There's a fee involved, yeah.
There is?
Yeah.
So you're getting a $100 fine, but you might, I don't know, our appeal process, I think, is around $1,000 bucks or something, isn't it?
It's going to depend on the, I think there's a schedule for it, I don't know exactly.
Does anybody know what the schedule is?
We've got to figure out the cost, probably. Depends how we structure it.
Well, you see, Mr. Mayor, you see what I'm saying? You get a $100 fine. Are you really going to appeal that if you feel like you're in the, in the rights, and you got to pay $1,000 to get your decision?
Through the Chair, if you, just to counteract in a bit, if it's a criminal activity, you're going to have to pay an attorney to go to court. Otherwise, you're going to flee and just go out. So, I mean, there's costs involved all the, all the way around. I mean, in my mind, I mean, it equates out.
Through the Chair, Chief, just a question, is, please, Mr. Grocott, are you done? You had one more point, I think?
No, I think, except we don't know how much these, what the fine is.
$100.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Grisilli, but in that case, you're trying to protect yourself against a criminal record.
Right.
In this case, you're just trying to protect yourself from a $100 fine. You don't think that, you know, let's say you're at the bar. Let's say the three of us are at the bar.
Well, maybe the two of you, because I don't go to bars.
Well, okay.
Well, we better hurry up, we're going to make that happen.
Yeah. Well, my point is this, let's say there's three individuals, the police walk in, and, you know, you and Randy are arguing, and I'm standing there watching, but I say, hey, guys, stop, you know, suddenly, because they caught me saying, hey, guys, stop, I'm part of this unruly thing, and I get a $100 fine, too. And I say, wait a minute, timeout, I wasn't a part of this, I was just watching when they walked in, yeah, I said something. There are situations, I'm sorry.
They have to warn you, though. You get caught doing it again, well.
Okay, yeah, I guess you're right, there's a warning process, all right. I'm just, I'm sorry to push on this. You would think, you know, I'm a law and order guy, I kind of like the idea of this, but I'm trying to play devil's advocate a little bit and push back on it.
Similarly, I would say, someone who gets a ticket nowadays, a citation, the city gets a little piece. It's all the other stuff, all the other costs for a traffic citation.
But again, you get to go in front of a judge. So in this case, I guess ultimately, we would end up being the judge, but then again.
There's all these other fees.
All right.
Okay, and Mr. Klein?
Yeah, through the Chair. Chief, doesn't this more have to do with establishments as opposed to people? We're really talking about the establishments, because if you come to an establishment, you give a warning because there's a fistfight out front, you're still going to book the guys for getting in a fistfight.
Correct.
And then you're going to tell the bar, hey, you know, you got to calm your crowd down. If we come back, we're going to fine you.
Yeah, this, the primary driver of this is the establishments.
Exactly.
And spill-over activity from the establishments. It's not, for, without the establishments, we probably wouldn't be here talking.
Exactly. So that's what we're really talking about. We're talking about these establishments we have downtown policing themselves, and this $100, $160 fine is mainly an incentive of going, hey, if you don't want to get fined, hire another bouncer. Or, you know, or, you know, regulate your crowd, and don't serve as much, you know, hard alcohol, whatever it is, it's a disincentive for them to continue business as usual, correct?
That's the intent, and we'll, hopefully, that will occur, and we'll see this summer, but I think it, my sense is it will be effective, but we'll see through the summer.
Okay. Okay, Speaker Carr, Speaker Pat Bell's gone, I believe.
No.
I don't see her there, so.
You have somebody else.
Okay, so move that on. Oh, anybody else like to speak on that? Sure. Celia Harris, welcome. Thanks for spending your evening with us. All right.
Well, good evening, counsel. I don't know if I'll say what Pat Bell says, but I certainly have a comment on this. I do agree with staff's proposal here, but I live on Cranfield Avenue, and we have a couple churches in our neighborhood, and I think one of them, their members exhibit a lot of unruly behavior, and I don't know if this proposed change also covers nonprofit organizations such as churches, or if it only covers businesses such as bars and restaurants. Because I would hope that when we call to complain about the noise and the behavior at the church, that the police also would have this tool, you know, to offer warnings to church members or the church organization itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you speak to that, Mr. Rubens?
Rubens, can you clarify? No, it's non-house, but is it only business, or is it everywhere?
Well, there'd be, I suppose, a fact-specific issue that I'd be concerned about dealing with a church, and we do have an exemption in the code about religious activities, and that's constitutional. We need to have that in there. But, but if the, if it was conduct-based, I'd feel confident we could, we could issue the warnings. It's just, we'd have to be careful in evaluating the event, because somebody's religious activity might be considered to be noisy or unruly when it's really religious, a religious.
I would think that there would be someone having a wedding or reception or something like that, or whatever, that I would think that hopefully that the, I'm sure the officers have faced this before.
Yeah.
It's not the first or last time, so I'm sure they've dealt with it.
We'd have to focus on the conduct and give the same warnings, et cetera.
Okay, I think, we ready for a motion? Yeah, but an ordinance here.
Mr. Mayor, move introduction of ordinance number.
1420.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing amendment to Chapter 9.32 of the Municipal Code regarding unruly gatherings.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, just to point out, there's a little typo in Section 1 of the ordinance. It should be Section 9.32, not.
Five.
Five, yeah. Thank you.
So that can be corrected when we say it as a, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, we have a second on that? Yeah, you have a second, sorry. Grocott?
Councilmember Ramon.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
I got a party with you guys.
Yeah, so.
Not me.
Okay, study session, we have two items, one on the strategic plan, and then the other one is on the, looking at the 2011 capital budget. Last two items.
Good evening again.
Honorable mayor, members of City Council, before I get into my full presentation of
30 or 40 slides on the topic of the city reserves.
Reserves, oh, good.
I thought I would ask you if you'd like me to do that, or if the report that I have submitted to you covers the type and scope of information that you have requested. This is, this item comes out of the city's strategic plan. The main policy document that really we're talking about here at the end of the day is the formal council-adopted reserve policy, which is incorporated into our budget document. Again, this is a study session item, so you're not looking at modifying, but providing direction. I'm happy to bring up my slides and do that if you'd like.
So why don't I make a proposal, see how counsel feels? Because of, this is an exceptional report, and it's a hot topic. I think at least hitting on a few of the highlights slides, I would like to see, you don't have to go through all of them, but I'd like to just spend the time, do the nature of, what do you think, Mr. Grocott, over here?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so let's do that.
Okay, we'll go through it a little bit. Starting with our existing policy, it talks about, it sets levels. Currently, our minimum level is 10% for the general fund reserve policy. We have less than that right now, as we've spent some of those reserves during this current year as part of our sort of transition plan. The proposed budget that the council has provided us some direction on would reestablish enough reserves, just over the minimum amount of 10%. The policy sets 20% as a goal for providing it. There are a couple other things. Here's what we've got now, the 8.7% of the general fund for the economic uncertainties, and that is our primary reserve. When we talk about reserves in the city, typically, we're talking about this economic uncertainty reserve, now about $2.5 million. The liability fund, which covers a lot of the workers' comp, general liability claims, which are sewer claims, public safety claims, public infrastructure claims, as well as any property-type claims, vehicle claims, those types of things, all covered in our liability, has a fund of about $1 million. This fund tends to probably fluctuate more than any other fund, because it's being, going to be driven based on claims, and a lot of the claims in this city are related to water, flooding, sewer backups, those kinds of things. So, they tend to be related to weather phenomena, and can sometimes be hard to predict in terms of severity of claims. But we've got that there, in addition to the operating budgets that are put aside for liability. Replacement in vehicles, about four or five years ago, these funds were set up in the city. They've been very important funds in terms of building in annual replacement costs for technology infrastructure. It's not just the typical desktop screens, but some of the large, expensive printers that we have in the city, all the network infrastructure that we've got in this main primary facility, as well as our satellite facilities, our telecommunications systems, radio systems, all those things covered here, as well as our rolling stock. So, the police vehicles, the public works vehicles, parks and rec vehicles, other maintenance vehicles, and larger pieces of equipment that we've got covered here as well. There was a category in the last one I won't go into, because we don't have a reserve, but a possible reserve category that's called out as a state budget contingency, as the state's gotten sort of addicted to stealing money from local governments. The thought of having a fund or a reserve there, another, another train of thought is that if you put a fund there, you're simply going to attract the monster to take your fund. But simply food for thought and food for the discussion, since this is a study session. Undesignated litigation, we have, and we created, again, about four or five years ago. We took, we tried to consolidate all the various legal service funds that were in various department budgets, including the city attorney's budget, into one legal services fund for the city, so that it would be easier for the management staff, the city council, the public to understand what we're spending on those types of costs on an annual basis. This thought would be to create some kind of a contingency fund related to that budget. As you're all very well aware, the costs related to paying for attorney's fees and those kinds of things can be very unpredictable. Looking back in years past in the city, if you look back over the last ten or fifteen years, there have been years and occurrences where the legal services budget, more so than any other department budget in the city, has been over-expended. And it's simply because the city management staff, budget staff, department staff have been unable in a given year to anticipate certain litigation that was presented to the city. So, then we talk about the GFOA, and that's the Government Finance Officers Association, excuse me. And they provide us with some recommendations as professionals in terms of what we might look at. And these are very similar to any sort of fiduciary recommendations that come from these kinds of bodies, in terms of looking at the predictability and volatility of the reserves, based on the volatility of the expenditures. Are your expenditures very predictable? Well, our salaries and benefits tend to be very predictable. You can, you can kind of bank on what they're going to be at the beginning of the year, what they're going to be on the end of the year, as opposed to something like I just talked about a moment ago, in terms of attorney's fees or sewer claims. The volatility is very different there. Perceived exposure to significant one-time outlays, you know, disaster state budget takeaways, state budget takeaways being harder probably to predict, large-scale disasters being hard to predict. But over the course of decades, we do have a very good track record on the types of disasters that San Carlos actually faces in a given year. And those would be on a much smaller scale, in terms of creek flooding or more localized disasters. And then, of course, liquidity being an issue in terms of how much cash does the city have on hand relative to a need for reserves. You could have a great big reserve, and if it's not, if it's not liquid, it's not going to do you a lick of good in terms of when you're dealing with something that's volatile and unpredictable. So, the majority of the city's general fund reserves are produced by a small number of sources, or revenues, excuse me, and that's sales tax, property tax, fees for service, those kinds of things. So, you do have a relatively small pool of revenue. So, there's a risk there, in that if your property tax, if there's a major change, you know, say a prop, and go back and put yourself in the shoes of council members back in the late seventies, Prop thirteen, if you're dealing with that, those, you would want a really large reserve, because one of your primary revenue sources being unexpectedly impacted in an ongoing way, you're going to need time to sort of figure out how to reorganize, readdress the city in terms of working on those kinds of things. However, the likelihood, again, of one of your stable revenue sources taking, you know, major sustained type of changes, permanent changes, would be a lower amount. Sales tax is obviously one that we're getting used to dealing with the last two years, in terms of seeing the numbers really come down. And as a result, the city, for the first time in, gosh, you know, at least ten or fifteen years, used some reserves, some formal reserves in this past budget, to help come up with a budget plan for the year. A city, like any city, is going to be very dependent on local economic performance. We utilize consulting firms that look at municipal revenue statewide to help us understand the data as soon as it's available, and what the real trends are in the state, in the county, and with cities like us, and even economic zones within the town. So, that's sort of the highlight there. In terms of volatility, talking about our labor contracts, obviously, labor is a major portion of the city's budget. However, it's a very stable, very predictable expenditure that, and it's also an expenditure where, if you were to be impacted in some kind of a negative or unforeseen financial way, you do, as a city council, have tools to deal with and address the fact that you'd have a revenue shortage. So, you could possibly lay people off or do furloughs, or there are things that you could do in a relatively short amount of time related to the overall personnel budget in an emergency situation, use reserves. We have done things in the city to try to control these in the past, and that helps deal with some of the volatility of the expenditures. Perceived exposures to significant one-time outlays. We've used a portion of our economic uncertainties reserve. The two point five million dollars is what we've got remaining. That's brought us down to a lower level. Increasing the one-time usage, or this last year's usage of our reserves, has created a sort of a new history now, if you will, as we look forward at this, where not only are our reserves a little lower than they were last year, but our frequency of use now has jumped up, which is another factor you want to take a look at. We've had now two years in a row of state raids. We have the borrowing raid this, last year, from the state, and now the RDA raid that's just taken place this year. The Bay Keepers is an example of an unanticipated legal expenditure. So, there are other funds paying into the general fund that also need to be considered, the sewer fund, the RDA. They need to pay a portion of their own way. And in such, as part of the overhead factor, we need to look at making sure that they've got the reserves to offset their cost, if you will, of the operating budget. So, that's another consideration that needs to be looked at. One fund that is going to need some attention over the next couple of years is the MPDS Fund, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Thank you, Robert. Fund has been underwater for, gosh, I, six or seven years at least.
So to speak.
So to speak.
Underwater.
Yeah. The pun was intended. Sorry. I couldn't resist. That's a fund that not only isn't, is unable to carry its own weight in terms of its annual operating budget, let alone provide any sort of reserve for those types of stormwater Liquidity. This is just a normal fiduciary issue that we deal with when we look at anything related to the city's finances. In my opinion, liquidity and preservation of principle, the general fund, fund balances, or the general fund's annual operating budget, or any of the other fund's annual operating budget, are the two most important considerations when we make any financial decision, including how we deal with reserves. And we need our reserves to be well-protected. We, obviously, that principle is critical, and you need it to be liquid. And then, after that, you know, getting a reasonable rate of return would be important while that money's sitting there. So, what does the GFOA recommend? No less than five to ten percent of reserves, or no less than one to two months of general fund operating expenditures. Historically, we've tried to be in that ten percent level, based on the current budget that we'd need about three hundred thousand dollars more. As I said, in the proposed budget, we have addressed that. So, depending on what happens there, taking a look at some of our neighbors and what they've got, there's, you sort of see a very wide range of reserves, up to fifty percent on here. And I think there's at least one city in the county that can fund their entire annual operating budget from reserves if they had to. Not everybody has policies. We think that our, you know, our policy is a good one. We review it annually with the city council as part of the budget process, and we would be an advocate of continuing that process. We seem to be in the ballpark, on the lower end of the scale, in terms of the cities that we're looking at currently, right now. I think if our proposed budget were to go through, we'd be, you know, right there at the sort of bottom end still, but a little more solidly in the range. Right now, we're clearly at the bottom of these particular cities. So, then we talk a little bit about some of the terminology that you often see in our budget or our annual financial statements. And that's the reserved restricted money. This is money that's, that is legally restricted for debt service, or loans between funds, or this money is very hard set and hard to deal with and move around. The unreserved or designated reserves, these are the reserves that really the city council sets up. So, your economic uncertainties reserve falls in this category. It's the largest single category here. And then we have our unreserved, undesignated, and that's our fund balance, and that's the cash in the bank that we have. It's a small amount. You could consider a reserve if you want. You could move it around and provide different designations to, to it if the council so desired. We have always, at least for the last ten years of my employment here, considered this money to be unreserved, undesignated fund balance. And it helps to provide the operating cash that we need on a, on a monthly basis, as we move money around and lay from the San Mateo County investment pool and others. Here's how those three categories play out, in terms of where the money is at currently in this budget, where it's projected to be for fiscal year 2010. Some of the other reserve balances that we've already talked about, for the internal services funds in the liability area or facility reserves. We actually have a rather small city building improvements reserve, and a lot of that is related to the library and the tenant fees that are paid over there. One large area of reserves that we really don't have, and I'm just beginning to touch on it here, is a facilities replacement reserve, or even a maintenance reserve of some kind, larger than half a million dollars. We've done projects in this building just in the last decade that are much larger scale than that, with the major roof project here that was fortunately related back to the Loma Prieta earthquake that was rather expensive. We've had, you know, HVAC system updates. There, the, this, probably one of the Achilles heels in this building has always been the electrical load, the fact that this building was built in the sixties and really wasn't designed to handle the type of technology that we've put into it and the electrical demand. So, we're constantly having to balance this building electrically to keep it working. And that, you know, that's going to continue. A major project that you're going to see coming forward for this building, probably in the next ten years, is going to be this elevator over here. It's not ADA compliant. It's had some issues. It's going to need to be replaced, and those things are very, very expensive. And they're not fun ways to spend your money for the city, for the public, who's, you know, would like to see some investment out in the community, to say, hey, we've got to pay, you know, half a million to a million dollars for an elevator in City Hall. It would be better to have, set up a reserve and pay for those things over time. Now, large-scale, really large-scale, like replacement of this facility in terms of its lifespan, there's going to be some decisions for the council to make in terms of, do you want to set all that money aside over the life of the facility? Or do you want to set a portion of it aside and then bond for the rest when you build the facility, recognizing that that facility's going to have a lifespan out into the future for a number of generations, and that they, as they mature and come into the community and pay their taxes, that they'd be paying for that on sort of an ongoing basis? But that's really one area, the facilities in general in this community, that we would be looking. We could, we could do a lot more in terms of guidance. As part of the capital budget that we'll talk about in a few minutes, you'll see that there's a facilities master plan. We've previously done one as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for some of their facilities. Be looking citywide for the facilities to help guide our, our funding of facility replacement and investment in, on into the future. Moving on there. So, our recommendations right now would be to maintain the minimum ten percent balance with the, with the goal of twenty percent over the next few years, recognizing that, you know, we're in an extraordinary, extraordinary financial period. In my fifteen-year career, this has been the worst I've seen it. And I know a number of managers who, you know, have been around for forty years in their career and say the same thing. This is the worst that they've ever seen it. They lived through Prop thirteen as city managers. This is just very unexpected, probably not the normal time for talking about increasing reserves, really talking about whether or not it's time to actually spend some of those reserves, as this city has done and other cities have done as well. Liability reserve, I think we, it's important that we continue to set this money aside. This money, really, a lot of this money doesn't come from a specific investment from the city council, but rather from the operating budget. When money is budgeted for the average, we try to look at a rolling average in terms of what we've been spending on premiums and deductibles and those kinds of things, as we put that budget together. And then, when we don't spend all the operating budget, it'll stay in here, and it's sort of rolled up and created a nest egg to help us out in the years where the budget hasn't been enough to cover those expenditures. So, we think that this is sufficient right now, and seems to be working effectively relative to the, the size of the city's exposure. Vehicle equipment, also, this seems to be working well right now, and technology. One thing that we're considering, and you should consider as well as you think about reserves and how the policy might change, or how you'd like to reallocate resources, is there some really major operating considerations that the counties look, or the city's looking at right now in terms of contracting out police or fire with the county, or Cal Fire or Redwood City? This would have a major impact on how much you would need to set aside in terms of technology and equipment, replacement reserves for rolling stock, and those types of things. And I think we can probably skip the state budget and undesignated litigation and facilities. Okay. So, I think I'll just wrap it up there. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We can also make this PowerPoint presentation available on the city's website tomorrow.
Good. Questions? Mr. Grocott, please.
Turn to the page I had, sorry. So, the question I have, the first one I have, Jeff, is how much do we have total in money being invested?
Over the course of the year, it fluctuates, but it tends to be, I think, mid forty millions. And that's all funds rolled up, not general fund, not everything. Average is around forty million dollars.
Forty million. And then, the, has that increased or decreased over the years? Do we have a trend on that?
It's pretty.
I know it's an average, but...
It's pretty steady relative to its size. I think it's decreased the last couple of years, as, as everything has. But, you know, when you looked at the amount, you wouldn't think it was a dramatic decrease in terms of...
Be interesting to see that, like even going back, you know?
Yeah. I'm not sure that we've got it in graph form, but that data would be available as part of the CAFR, I believe.
Yeah.
At least for a few years.
Would it be very difficult to put that to... Would it be very difficult to put that together over, say, the last, I don't know, 10 years or something like that?
Take a look at it and see if we can pull something together for you.
And then what's the volatility then of our cash flow? You hit on that a little bit, but, you know, what's our margin in there? Where, because just to explain, you know, I understand we have money that comes in sort of on a quarterly basis, a lot of it, or even once a year or half a year, every six months. The only thing we have that comes in consistently, I think, is fees, and that even fluctuates. So we've got income, and then we've got revenue that's always going out because we've got payroll and so forth. So we need some margin in there, right? Do we know what that is?
You know, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what it is, but yeah, we do know what it is in terms of what our average monthly operating costs are, and we track that. Payrolls will vary, you know, there is some volatility in payrolls, but oftentimes the most volatile payrolls are still anticipated. For example, we have a cap on our vacation accrual of two years. So once a year, the city will pay out any excess vacation amount over two years to keep that liability within a margin that it feels comfortable controlling. So we know that that payroll will be much larger than normal payroll, and so we can anticipate how we're moving money around. But typically, even though property tax and sales tax aren't coming in, you know, every week, we have so much experience with this, and it is so dependable in terms of when it will arrive, that we can anticipate and manage our cash throughout the quarters to ensure that we've got enough money on hand to meet our liabilities and our expenditures until that next revenue influx comes in. Ironically, probably, and not so much ironically, but sadly, I guess, some of the biggest fluctuations are really caused by the state, when they've delayed sales tax or they've taken, you know, that type of volatility has been the volatility that's probably been unanticipated in the past that we've had to struggle with and react to rather than have been able to plan for, although I think also sadly, we're getting better at planning for that, so.
And then, do we have an idea of, you know, we have money invested, and then is there a interval that we recognize of so much is coming liquid, excuse me, and then we can make the choice, do we want to invest it again, lock it up for six months or a year or whatever? Or perhaps do we want to not invest it and keep it liquid? But do we have something, like the best example I can think of is in my own personal accounts, you know, I have CDs set up so that they may be one a year, they may be 18 months, but every six months I have CDs that come so I can make a decision, do I need to pump that into my cash flow and not invest it, or can I just put it into another CD?
We have similar tools to that.
You have similar tools to that, okay. And then, once designated into a reserve fund, does that influence the type of investments that we're doing? Or, you know, how locked up is it once we put it into a reserve fund?
Well, I think, you know, for our sake, and that is a good question, and it touches on, you know, a bit of the presentation, you want that money to be liquid, but the reality is so much of the city's portfolio is liquid through LAF, which is a very liquid investment, and the county pool, which also is very liquid, although there are limitations to how much money we can access. But we feel like we've got enough liquidity in the city's portfolio that we would be able to handle at least accessing the full reserve in a relatively short amount of time. And there are also emergency provisions that county and LAF would have to allow us to access money if we were, you know, in an emergency, if we'd be...
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask those questions for a very specific reason that I'll get into when we get to discussion.
Mr. Mott?
Sure. Mr. Mott, great report, a couple of quick questions. On one of your slides, you talked about a disaster would wipe out our current reserves for the general fund. You said it wouldn't wipe it out quickly. What do you think that real number should be?
Well, you know, certainly I would like to see the reserves as your chief financial officer closer to 20%. You know, the world's changed over the last 20 years in terms of litigation and how, and people out in the world and even companies and people feel in terms of liability and personal accountability and legal accountability and those kinds of things. And it's an issue that I sit on the ABAG plan, who's our general liability and property insurance provider, and it's a similar type of question that we struggle with when we try to determine what level of coverage we have. You know, our liability, our workers' comp, our property insurance protects us in many, many ways, but there are gaps. And one gap that a city, this city, any city, deals with that can be particularly devastating, and you saw this play out in Half Moon Bay, are inverse liability claims. And how are you going to protect yourself from those kinds of things when as a regulatory body, you need to and have the responsibility to make those land use decisions, recognizing the inherent mega value that can be associated with that? If A, one, you get it wrong as a council body, you know, or two, years later, it plays out that, you know, somehow the city made a mistake, even if it's a good fake, it can be tens of millions. So, you know, I think the closer that you can get to 20% these days, the better off you are because we've seen even in, you know, the sleepy little county of San Mateo, and this is a pretty great place to live and work, that those mega claims are out there. And, you know, I wouldn't want to be Half Moon Bay dealing with their problems in this economic environment.
Mr. Mott, I'll just hit you with the next couple of questions, and a couple of them are requests for later on. But one of the things, we've thrown around the term LAF quite a bit in this meeting. We probably need to define that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Local Agency Investment Fund. Do I have to put a quarter in?
Yeah, you do.
Councilmember Brusili.
And then there's, you've pointed out a number of reserve funds that we should fund or have something else there. I was trying to come up with a number that, sort of at a very low level, we're talking about 350K that were underwater, but there's a few others in here. If I had to put a total number of what it would really take to fund our reserves fully, what would that be?
I think it'd probably be closer to half or five million. So you're probably about halfway there in reality. If you got to a $5 million designated reserve, I think you'd be, you know, pretty comfortable. You'd still have some room, but I would sleep better.
Last question, and this is something for a later discussion, is that while we are talking about reserves, another interesting topic to chat about would be our debt service. How much have we got and what's going on with our liabilities? But with that, I can yield.
Sure. We can give you a report on that in the future if you'd like.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Thank you very much. No speaker cards, no. Okay. Onto 10B.
Are we going to discuss this item or just ask questions of staff?
I think it's just provide...
I thought they wanted some sort of direction.
There's no action required, but if the council would like to give us some direction with respect to how we incorporate these policies into the budget, that would be fine.
I'm sorry, yeah. I mean, pretty much agreement in policy, but we've got to get more specific. Do you want to start or throw out something and see how we think about it?
Sure. The reason I was asking the questions I did is because, you know, even in my own business, I try to keep a certain amount of cash on hand because, you know, same thing, clients pay me, clients don't pay me, whatever, and I got bills to pay all the time. So, you know, you try to keep a certain amount. That's why I was so interested in, you know, what I call the liquidity margin, you know, what do you need to have liquid that goes up and down? And I get pretty concerned in my own business when it goes down below a certain number. And, you know, I know we, I thought the answer was about 40 million that we have invested. At one time, I remember reading a report, I thought we were at 44. So what I'd rather see done is that we really pay attention to that number, that 40 million, and where it is, and then also really have a good grasp as a council of what is that margin that we need to make payroll and do the other things, pay the other bills we need to pay, so that we don't want to squeeze that number too much. Let's say it's, you know, about 8 million. Well, then we might want something like 16 million that we always know we have so that that 8 million or that, so the 16 million might go down to 8, and then it goes back up to 16, you know, as you flow and fluctuate. Because in reality, if we've got about 40 million that we're investing one way or the other, we could put that money in these reserve funds. We know it's there, as long as it's not restricted funds, reserve funds. But put it there, save what it's for, and there it is. Because part of the thing that we get accused of sometimes is, you know, it said, oh, you got all this money, you're just sitting on it. And I've said to the city manager before, that's why we need a sinking fund, because we need to show that, yeah, we may have money that we're investing, but it's not just sitting there. We, it's, there's a plan for it, there's a design for it, there's a need for it, whether it's, you know, replacement costs or whatever. So I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is I would rather go ahead and put these funds where we've set them, these reserve funds, like, you know, right now it's at 8%. It needs to be at 10. Fine, put the money in there, put it at 10, and let's be done with it. It doesn't mean it comes out of our investments. It just means, it's an accounting measure. You just say it's there. If this 40 million, it's still 40 million, but it's just designated differently. So that's what I'd like to see.
Not respectfully to disagree. I mean, I can appreciate putting numbers there, but those, I don't think we have a lot of free money running around here. They're designated into certain funds that, I mean, we've got, of the $41 million we have at 1231, or, pardon me, almost $40 million at 33110, 912, 13 million of it is in redevelopment money. So that's sort of a different, I think, thing than what we're even speaking about here, because this is general fund numbers that you're dealing with, correct? And so we've got like 20, it's got about $25 million, and that $25 million, I mean, is, and you didn't show us that, but it's in different funds. So it's really not, the general fund doesn't have a lot of, I guess I'm a little concerned because you can put it, you can put money anywhere you want on a piece of paper, but if we needed it there, we can't get it because we need it somewhere else, is I guess I'm getting at. And the whole point of, I mean, this is very frustrating to me, this whole thing that you've brought up to me, because of course, as you've mentioned, this is the absolute worst possible time. We, I mean, I was doing just quick math. I mean, we'd have to get, just at 5% of our, to go to 5%, we need another million four. We don't have a million four. Heck, we don't have 1% more, $280,000. So I'm very concerned about setting, I mean, I love the generalities of it, and I think we need to perhaps have this discussion every six months or a year, whatever it is, but to force things to actually take money out, we can make that decision as a council, but then our operating budget is going to be affected if we're going to put these reserves up. So if we don't like what we have now, and boy, it's sure a tough budget year, it's going to be even worse. So it's a very, it's almost counterintuitive. I mean, I understand that, and I think I appreciate the information, believe me, because it brings the reality, and I appreciate your comments too, because it shows, and I ran the same thing when I was a CFO, if I ran below a certain number, I went crazy. I said, this is the bottom line. I got to have this kind of money, otherwise I'm in trouble. But in that case, I could control my, as I'm sure you can, a little bit, to some extent, your budget a little bit. A lot of what we have is, we're not, we can't control it because we can't, perhaps we could have brought more revenue in, perhaps you could bring more revenue in. We can't seem to bring any more revenue in, and that's the rub of it. There's no upside here. And that's the thing that's really frustrating to me. But I think this discussion is a good one, and I think we need to have it, but relative to setting goals, I'm all for, but nothing in my mind that we should ever set in stone, at least not today, until we can actually put some money in there. And then if we have a couple of good years or even one good year, we make that call. We don't raise our budget up. We don't spend the money that we had. And then we start putting it away, literally every year. You put away a certain percentage every single year, which we're trying to do. I know this year in Mr. Weiss's budget, we've got money set aside in Fund 25, and we're trying to do that. But I think it's extremely difficult to try to put some money in some of these things because, again, the general fund is just, even though it says there's $25 million in our city LAF and our city and county pool, those monies are in different, whether the sewer fund or the street fund or whatever, NPDS or whatever funds they have, they're pretty much committed. So anyway, whatever high finance that is.
Well, I just have a question on that. It's actually about, if you take out the RDA money, it's about $28.5 million. How much of that is in designated, you know, fixed funds?
Well, I mean, there's a considerable amount of money invested that is general fund money. You know, make no mistake, in a catastrophic disaster, you would have access to it. However, that money exists for the specific purpose and is related to your ongoing operating budget. So if you were to spend it, you would not have it to spend in six months.
And actually, I'm not suggesting you spend it. I'm just suggesting that you designate, you go ahead and designate it in these reserves, which, since they're created by the council, you can dip into them if you want. It's just you're going to be cautionary about dipping into them because you see them as reserves.
Right. And the way that I, the way in which I would go about recommending that if the council wanted to look at doing something like that would be to take a portion of that $3.5 million number for the undesignedated fund balance and allocating a certain percentage of that to reserves. Because it's really, you're saying you're going to just take some one-time money and make a one-time payment into reserves for a one-time need. You could look at doing that in the future. It's there one way or another. It doesn't get spent without the council's authorization anyway. This way, it provides the council or future councils with a little bit more flexibility.
Thoughts, Mr. Fine?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Councilmember Brusili. I think we need to get to 10%, but after that, I think we should have a goal, but that goal shouldn't be set in stone based on the current economic times that we're in. I would like to see us at 20%. So if we do see an influx of money or we do see the budget grow a bit, let's not spend that, let's put it away, or put away at least a sizable chunk of it. But other than that, I, you know, it's a great report, and I understand that we're insufficient in a lot of areas, but we're insufficient all around. So it's kind of hard to put money away when we don't have enough just to get us the day to day.
Mr. Mott, anything?
Just very briefly, I appreciate the report. This is all about visibility and what we're doing. And I appreciate the opportunity that the council can actually become strategic about how we're starting to deal with one-time money that we get and also be very cognizant about when we've had to dip into reserves and where we've got some exposures.
And again, I'll say, reserve's a really important topic for me. And, you know, we also just need to make sure when we, next month, get into budget, you know, we communicate with our citizens that there are these general fund operations we're dealing with, and we'll be making some business model adjustments there probably that will impact our expense, because revenue's not going to happen, but we'll reduce expense. But we also have to take care of shop for capital items, which we'll be talking about next, and we need to take responsibility for the reserves. And there are a lot of articles in the last week in the papers and magazines about, is it economic recovery or is a second depression coming? If second depression's coming, I know what's going to happen to our building reserves. Our 10%, the 20% is not going to go to 20, it's going to go less than 10. But if there's economic recovery, that's the time when you want to get healthy and manage your operations and your capital, and we haven't been spending any money on capital at all, and reserves. And having goals, I think, is a great thing. I think 10% with a goal of 20, if there's a recovery, let's do it. So again, most importantly, thank you for the report. It gave me everything that I wanted to know about where we are and where we're going.
So is that, any questions, Mr. Mott? Anything else? Good. Thank you. Okay. Okay, last topic here, we have an agenda item on looking at 2011 capital budget projects, provide direction in preparation of a capital budget document for our consideration at our June 28, 2010 city council meeting. our June 28, 2010 city council meeting.
Okay, good evening again. Sort of a continuation in many ways of the last discussion. The item here before you is a study session on the city's capital budget, so again, you wouldn't be making any decisions tonight, but we'd be looking at direction from you. Primarily, the purpose for bringing this forward is to get direction related to the specific projects that the staff has proposed to fund. This is kind of a strange budget year for us. Let me go back here. In that, there's so much uncertainty about when this budget would be adopted. So typically, the capital budget is incorporated right into our budget document, they're adopted at the same time. For the last few years, we have tried to break out the study sessions into two different evenings to let the council focus on one and then the other, but they're adopted together. Since we're unsure whether or not we'll be able to actually adopt a formal budget within this fiscal year, before the next fiscal year starts, there are some elements in the capital budget related to the sewer fund that will need to be adopted to be in compliance with the Baykeeper's dissent decree. So we're going to be planning on bringing forward the capital budget and the operating budget for the sewer fund in June, if not the whole budget entirely, just as sort of an FYI. Here's what's being projected, and again, this is, these are projections, so they're based on specific assumptions about projects that we think are happening, or anticipate are going to happen, or revenue that we think is going to come in, or isn't going to come in. So you could see the sewer fund, you see the big upswing in the sewer fund, and that's simply because we're projecting increases in the sewer fund, yet we haven't projected the future capital budget costs, because we think that that needs to be covered in the facility's master plan. So it's just simply out of whack in terms of a projection, where we are projecting revenue coming in, but we're not projecting expenditures, so you're seeing a growing bank account. The RDA line there, that's really timing issues with projects and development, development-type projects in the RDA. You can see Fund 25 is just kind of bumping along there. It's assuming that you're going to start to fund it, it certainly has needs. Once you do start to fund it, it's going to basically spend the money that you pump into it, and then you see it kind of take a big dip there at the end, and that's because of a larger scale in individual proposed project on a remodel of a city facility, talking about building maintenance issues. You can see the Park in Lou, Fund 27, fund take a big dip right in the beginning, and that's the turf project driving down this fund balance. These aren't ongoing budgets, but they're ongoing fund balances. Just showing you how much available cash is on hand. These could change for lots of different reasons and lots of priorities, and they do tend to change over time. By the time we get to 2014, 15, probably be a fairly different picture, but that's the best we can do for now. Here's the actual dollar figures associated with the previous chart. List of some of the projects that have been completed this year. You have ideas, some IT projects, some public works projects, some city hall projects, some maintenance projects, all those kinds of things. Not a lot of money relative to the size of the city and the city's budget. And we'll get into general funding. I'm not going to talk a lot about the specific projects. We've got the Public Works Director, the Parks and Recreation Director, I think Mark Sawicki and Al Savay from Community Development to talk about RDA projects, or any projects you want to get into in more detail. Simply, we'll give you an overview. We do have, within the capital budget world, there are several different funds, again, the two primary general fund funds in the capital budget are Fund 25, which is the general fund capital budget, and Fund 27, which is the parks' capital budget, which is primarily all general fund money when it really gets its funding, though it has a couple other little sources, the Park in Lou and whatnot. Gas tax, another primary, non-general fund source that comes in for mainly street maintenance-type projects. As you can see, we've got these broken into two categories for you. The current projects, these are projects that have already been approved by the city council in a previous budget, they're either ongoing, or they're scheduled to start. And then the new projects down at the bottom there, which are being proposed in the gas tax world, you know, the primary street resurfacing projects tend to just be sort of ongoing annual projects, receiving different levels of funding and in different focus areas over the course of the year. The wastewater, the sewer fund, you can see the projects that have already been approved, the current projects and the new projects there. And the Park in Lou, with synthetic turf being the major project.
So how are we going to go through this, because we have all that here, and so forth?
You've got all that here, I'm almost done with my presentation.
How would you recommend we then?
Well, there's a, again, depending on the council, I think the Public Works Director would like to, and it would be very much appropriate for the Public Works Director to make a presentation, and let me just see here, this is my last slide, I believe, just giving you some indication of the millions and millions of dollars in identified unfunded projects that are out there. And this number, I imagine, will be pushed much higher as you get more in-depth in terms of facility projects that are potentially looming out there. There's some big stuff that I think will need to be addressed with that, as it continues on, it's more good news. I'm going to turn it over to Robert Weil, our Public Works Director, let him continue on in his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep it moving. I do have some pictures, though, so, they're a little more interesting slides. Saw a big number up there, 1.5 million for one-time costs on the sewer fund. And you'd seen these before when we talked about the consent decree, so I really don't need to go over too much on that. I did want to illustrate some of the things. We are planning to buy another hydro flush truck, this is how it works, I think it's pretty cool. And this is our crews doing it. This is what a manhole, a clean manhole, and this is brand new, but it's, that's the goal. One of the things that's on the previous slide is, we do need to be able to do quality control on this operation, and currently, we don't have the ability to do that, we don't have, most cities have a camera van and truck, that's the thing on the left here. And that's built into the, into that $1.5 million. We're going to look at alternatives, though, and one of the new alternatives that's out there is a robotic-type inspection system. So those are the kind of things we're going to look at. We're also going to look at whether it might make sense to contract for that service, either with another agency or with a contractor. So that's requested, that allocation of funds is requested, but we do want to look at alternatives in terms of what's the most cost-effective. As part of the sewer project, one of the big things is a sewer master plan, and it's a $300,000 engineering study. These tasks are already underway, root foaming, mapping upgrades, and system-wide cleaning and inspection. And the mapping upgrades will help us do monitoring of flows in the sewer system, and then that then enables us to do hydraulic modeling. The hydraulic modeling tells us where do we have capacity deficiencies in the system, and our system-wide cleaning and inspection tells us what the condition of the system is. And that leads to a prioritized capital improvement program. The consent decree gives us deadlines, we have to tell the Baykeeper Agency what we're going to do on this flow monitoring, hydraulic modeling by August 2010. We have to actually complete the flow monitoring by March of 2011, and then we have to complete this plan by March of 2012. That prioritized capital improvement program, we've talked somewhat about managing assets, and this is an example of that. We'll take that, those results, also the financial needs for the wastewater treatment plant capital program, and also our ongoing operation and maintenance needs. I'm hoping that over time, as we develop our computerized maintenance management system, implement it, and get good at doing our annual work plans, monitoring our performance, we'll actually be able to scale back on what we have to, the resources we have to dedicate to this program. But that, these three items will feed into the citywide asset management program that Jeff talked about. And within the sewer fund, will also lead us into a financial model of the sewer fund. It is an enterprise, it is basically the closest thing to a business that the city has, it's got to cover its own way, and we don't really have a good financial model for that enterprise right now. Once we have this, these key financial inputs, we'll be able to do that financial model. And then, from that, we'll be able to do the long-term sewer rate setting, and address some of the issues that we talked about when we had the Prop 218 hearing, things that we want to design these rates to accomplish. The prioritized capitalized program will also go into these capacity assurance projects. So the consent decree states that we have to address any capacity constraints in our system by March 2017. So Jeff showed that reserve number climbing, this is why it's not going to climb, one of the reasons it's not going to climb, because we're going to, we're kind of writing a report of all these problems that we're going to have to fix. Moving on from sewer into gas tax, I'm just going to highlight a few projects. This is a grant project, we only have to contribute a pretty small portion to it, it's, this is where Walgreens is, and Trader Joe's is the next parking lot over, this is a bus stop, El Camino Real and Belmont Avenue. And we have had a large number of accidents at this particular location, not all crosswalk-related, but at or near this intersection, and several involving pedestrian and one involving a bicycle. So the project would take this crosswalk and actually move it to the north side of the intersection, where there's a median island that provides refuge to the pedestrians. To do that, we actually have to move this bus pad to the left, and then this crosswalk would not have a traffic signal, but would have a flashing beacon that would help warrant the motorists traveling on El Camino Real, sometimes pretty quickly, that are pedestrians about to enter the crosswalk. So we've got a grant for $198,000 for that, and we have to put in $22,000 of gas tax, so that seems like a pretty good deal, and that's what the budget would do. Now, Cranfield Avenue, this one just came up, actually, at last week's Transportation and Circulation Commission. Here's Cranfield Avenue, San Carlos Avenue, actually, that's Alameda to Las Palgas. Carlmont High School driveway is here, and several churches, these unruly gatherings, are here. And this is a pretty, this is kind of like an engineer's nightmare here. The people that live there put this slide together for the Transportation and Circulation Commission last week, and so I borrowed it. Their problem is making, getting out of their driveway when there's a lot of traffic going on. They actually put together a video of the conditions out there during high school drop-off and pickup times, and it is very chaotic. Some of the things that people, do you see this red line here? People swing into Cranfield Avenue and drop off, at the same time, these green lines are paths of pedestrians that are trying to get across over to the high school. So it is chaotic, what's recommended is, oh, here's some of their quotes. I won't read those, but... So the proposed CIP project is a study, and I know there's a sensitivity to consulting It, we did a kind of a, I did what I could within the operating budget to look at for potential solutions, and we didn't come up with any potential solutions that would really solve this problem. So TNC Commission recommended that we take it to another level and go to a more formal study, which is beyond what the operating budget can afford. So that's what this $15,000 traffic study would do. They'd evaluated options, one option would be a modern roundabout, another one would be a traffic signal, another one would be trying to consolidate those three driveways into one. You might be able to just do that with paint. Another idea would be to put a stop sign there. The stop sign, I don't think, would be too practical, but we should look at it. So the potential construction costs, and this is just rough order of magnitude, probably $30,000 to $300,000. Now, we can afford the traffic engineering study, but you saw that kind of low line on the gas tax fund, it doesn't have a lot to spare, it doesn't have an unrestricted balance, really. So we really don't have this amount of money to plug into the project. But there's some, there's some protection in having looked for alternatives, I think that helps us in terms of legal liability, so I would recommend going forward with the engineering study. And as I said, it was recommended by the Transportation and Circulation Commission last week.
Through the chair. Sir, I have to ask a question on this one?
Sure.
Jump in just real quick. The question I have is the proximity to Belmont and their border, and the follow-up question would be, or second question to that would be, if it's really close, maybe there's the potential of putting, once you've done your study, of putting in together a project where we partner with them, partly so that you could go to BPAC and get grant funding as joint partners, it might strengthen the application.
I think that is a potential.
Okay.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
You're not so happy about that?
No, I'm not, but I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. All right, I'll keep it going here. This project is one of the benefits of the fiscal, the prudent fiscal policies this council has taken with Path A, because you, or Path One, whatever we've called it, because you've looked ahead and are able now to put some money into capital, you're able to deal with a problem that's been deferred for a long period of time. And it's, this is, you probably recognize it, you know, this is the industrial part of San Carlos, and this is Palgas Creek right here, this is where this pump station is located, and this whole area, in the white dotted line, drains that pump station. If the pump station fails, that area floods. It floods already, but it floods worse if the pump station goes down. And we have three pumps there, what is needed is to replace the motor, or the engine, driving one of the three pumps, it's the one that's barely the emergency backup, it runs off of propane, it's over 40 years old, and we're keeping it together. Our guys are good, and they've got it running, but you know, something could go wrong, we can't get parts for it anymore. So this is a $298,000 project, and because you're able to put money in capital this year, it looks like you're going to be able to, we can move forward with this project. Jeff talked about some litigation reserves, litigation exposure, and ADA is a big one, and this is, he talked about a million-dollar elevator in this building, there are many, many exposures that are, that could add up and add up very quickly. So as a way of guarding yourself against that, a self-evaluation and transition plan is recommended. So we're recommending that come from the Capital Projects Fund, that will be offset by an ABAG grant. Also, the gas tax, the gas tax funds would address the public right of way, and the park fund would address the park facilities. So the self-evaluation and the transition plan, as I understand it, give you some safe harbor legally. Now, this one is a park project, the Dog Park at Vista Park. I think they had a booth at the hometown days, and there's a lot of interest and excitement about this project. There's been no city money into it so far. This budget proposes $50,000 for preliminary design and environmental services, so it's kind of supplementing what's already been done by the community. So it's kind of supplementing what's already been done by the community. The construction would probably be on the order of a quarter million dollars. Again, that's, that's just kind of what I've seen these things cost before. There's been no real estimate of cost. And it would be up at Vista Park. They're looking at two areas that are kind of over the shoulder of the hill here, and these kind of lend themselves well to a dog park, because they're long and they're good for running. So there would need to be some, some technical work done to address the drainage from, the water quality from these sites, because you've got to make sure you're not causing pollution from the dog park. And so there'd be some expense to that, and you'd need to get through an environmental process. So that's basically what that, that money would go toward. And hopefully, the, the actual construction costs could come from donations. You have some money remaining in Measure G, and staff talked about where that money should go, and this is basically your savings from the good, the low bids on the synthetic turf project. And it looks like Crestview Park Playground would be the best choice for those. This equipment is old, and it's not accessible to the people with disabilities, and it's not a lot of fun right now. So, I mean, you get, you get a lot of bang for your buck by putting money into playground equipment, and that would, it's a nice, clean project. We can deliver that pretty well, pretty easily, I should say, and meet the June 12, 2012 deadline for expending Measure G funds. Holly Street 101 interchange, moving into the redevelopment agency now. This is a long-term project. We're, we're three years away from construction, but we have to plug a pretty significant amount of money into it each year to get through the Caltrans process, get this ready for construction. You, you looked, you saw this project in January and selected a top tier, and now we're moving forward with the next stage of engineering. We're about to actually do surveying on that project. Now, we asked the consultant, what do you think this project's gonna cost? And they said, well, probably about $12 million. But again, we haven't done a real estimate of this. Now, that's a much higher number than what we have plugged into our transportation impact fees right now. I, I don't want to act on that number yet until we get really a better number that's based on, on engineering. But it's a kind of a warning sign that, that our, our transportation impact fee may need to go up to, to cover these costs. So I think we have time to react to that, but it's just a heads up at this point. So you've seen that, I don't really need to go into that too much. But by going and doing this project study report, you set yourself up for funding opportunities. We get, we get the project shovel-ready, to use the, the federal buzzword.
Can I ask another question? May I? On this project, again, I know we were just out here with the BPAC tourists and looking at some improvements at that intersection, and the project applicant is Redwood City.
Right.
So again, I'm wondering, you know, would Redwood City have any part in this project?
They could, they could. I think we're gonna have to take the lead on it and get it, get it ready, and then we can go get some partners. At least, the least they can do is be by our side when we go to CCAG and say, we'd like, we'd like to get some grant funds.
Because this impacts Redwood Chores as much as it does us, right?
Mm-hmm. And then the last one I've got, last slide, is industrial road drainage study. One of the numbers Jeff flashed up there was, I think, $53 million for citywide drainage improvements unfunded. And it's a big problem, almost too big to, to deal with. And we've heard from people like Mr. Boris, who's come with flooding problems. We heard from folks that live in, on Cedar Street, flooding problems. And I don't have solutions to those problems in this budget. But the industrial road area, let me hear some pictures of it. It's flooded pretty frequently. We, it's in the RDA, so there's, there's, is a funding stream, although that's threatened by the state. But I think it's worth going ahead and looking at this problem. I think there, there may be some possible feasible solutions here. One reason I want to do this is that part of, this is Don Mancini's place, right out, right south of Holly Street. I forget what it's called.
The Park.
Mark. He called this Lake San Carlos. And, and the reason this area floods, in my opinion, is that the channels, the, I've seen a drainage study done when Redwood Chores went in in the 70s, and Caltrans did this study, and it, the system was designed to work with very minimal flooding and only in large events. But what's happened is that the channels, the drainage channels are clogged with weeds, toolies. And, and we may need some legal recourse to say, you need to maintain your channel so this area, this flooding doesn't happen on such a frequent basis. This study would give us the contemporary proof that that's, that's the problem, that's the cause, and that would give us a greater ability to go after our neighbors and cause them to do their maintenance. So there's a bunch of other projects in here. Doug could answer questions on some of them, and Mark could answer questions on others, and I can answer questions on the rest. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
May I ask, jump in with a question?
Sure.
Please. Mr. Malpey mentioned this in his presentation, and I think, I don't know if it's a question for now or a discussion item for later for the, for the council. We've always had, you know, never wanted as a council to do any bond funding. We've always tried to do a pay-as-you-go thing, but Mr. Malpey laid out the argument that, you know, some things you, you may want to bond on, because you put in something and then people in the future actually benefit for what those who are here now pay for. And perhaps, you know, we've wrestled with watershed policies and plans and flooding for years. And then we end up paying out sometimes because of, floods happen and people want money from us because they feel like it's our fault, and we end up, a lot of A-bag pick up on that, but still. What I'm going with this is we, that may be an area where we want to talk about something as a council, about doing some, taking on some debt through bonds to, to solve this issue once and for all.
Mr. Mr. Does that have to go to a vote of the people?
Well, it depends, obviously, on the revenue source you're using to pay the bonds.
Okay.
Obviously, examples of bonds, we have done in the past. We've done three redevelopment bonds that I've been involved with since I've been here. Those we paid out of the increment. However, in the case of the library, to your point, Councilmember Griselli, we didn't have a revenue source for that eight and a half million, so we did have to go to voters.
So the key, the key is to have a revenue source.
Correct.
If you don't have a revenue source, then we have to go and get two-thirds.
You could also use something called certificates of participation that would be supported by your property tax stream, but it's a general fund obligation that would have to be paid. And so you'd have to obligate some portion of your general fund revenue stream to pay those off.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands it. It's not as, I mean, nothing against what you said, but it's not as easy as it sounds, because there's a million complications.
And the first step, if I may, really would be, I think, to do the types of studies that Robert's proposing, because that'll give you an idea of the, the dollars that you would be dealing with to determine whether or not we actually had a revenue source or a portion of revenue source that we could dedicate towards that, or if you were talking about a, a tax measure.
Right. I mean, a good example to what Councilmember Girlcott is describing is what happened in the city of Burlingame. They did, in fact, do a bond for drainage issues, was $40 million, not unlike our estimate, and it did go to the vote, to Councilmember Griselli's point.
Okay, so just for, on the presentation, are we then having presentations, Mr. Long?
No, no, that's it. No, I tried to cover their projects.
You just covered everything on there. Okay. Comments then, or questions?
I have a question, just, just on one of these. I understand the majority of them, but I'm looking at a Burton Park Water Feature Recycling System for $80,000 in Park Lou Fund 27. Didn't we just put that in?
Right. And this is because the fountain is put in, it drains, it doesn't, the water that comes out of the fountain, you know, the water comes up, goes down, and then basically, it just drains into the street and runs down the street. So it wastes water and actually doesn't look good when water's just running down the street all the time. And so this would do something about that problem. We haven't settled on what the best option is. One option, and what this cost represents, would be to actually put, almost like a swimming pool treatment system, so you use the water over again, which is quite costly and a lot of operation and maintenance, although that conserves water. Another option is to put in a leach field, which, which would keep your grass, maybe keep your grass greener, but it would just let it go out and, and percolate down under the ground. Another option is to have it go into the sewer system during the summer and have it go into the storm drain, or just run down the street in the winter. So that's a soft number, the 80,000. We haven't done a lot of research on that, but it is, it is something we, we need to deal with, because it's, it's not a, right now, what's happening is it's, it's plugged into the sewer system, so that's basically storm drainage water running down to our, into our sewer system and, and helping and contributing to sanitary sewer overflows.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep going with that. Didn't the water feature itself cost around $80,000?
That's right.
This is fantastic. So I, I, and I don't mean not to come down on either of the two of you, because I don't believe either of you were here when we put this in, but this just seems like a mistake, that we put in a water feature system that didn't have proper drainage. You would think with water coming out of the water, up in the air, coming back down, that someone would have thought we'd, we'd need to drain it. But that's an $80,000 mistake, when we're talking about, you know, we have fields, not fields, but we have park facilities that are falling apart. We have a ball wall that's decrepit, and we're gonna spend $80,000 on a brand-new feature that we just put in, and, and someone didn't think it through.
I wouldn't argue with you.
Okay. Great. No, that's it.
Mr. Maude?
Hey. Just very quickly, we, we had heard the notion of lighting districts. Are there notions of flood districts or flood prevention districts? Are there other mechanics like that that we can start to explore for some of these capital improvements?
Certainly are, yeah. And that's, that's, I think that should be looked at for the drainage improvements, because the drainage improvements tend to benefit a smaller group of property owners than this whole city. It will benefit some more than others, for sure. So a special assessment district is certainly an option for, for storm drainage improvements. That's not what Burlingame did. They did do a citywide, a citywide revenue measure.
Question on that, or follow-up on that is?
Sure.
I know back some time ago, I forget exactly who was on the council or what it was, but we did talk about the watershed issues, because it, it may look like, well, the White Oaks District area is flooding, so make them pay for the improvements, because it's their homes. But it's not necessarily their homes. The water's coming down out of, you know, other places in the watershed and its development that's gone on elsewhere that's created impervious surfaces. So that's why you have to do, we, we've talked for years about doing a watershed study, and to do that, we've even talked about getting some buy-in with the county to look at their portions of land, because, excuse me, they have, you know, they're above us with their land, and that drains into ours. So you have to, and Redwood City, too. You know, it, it gets bigger than just one little neighborhood, is my point.
And just to follow up, I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Girlcott, but to, to the larger point that you did make, which is, this is something we've been talking about for years. Let's get something into place and let's fix the damn thing, because, you know, next winter's gonna come up, well, we still got rain. I don't know if winter's ever gonna end. But, you know, we know winters are gonna happen. We know we're gonna get more rain. We know we're gonna get more flooding, and, you know, I'd like to at least have our businesses have a place where it's somewhat dry and they can actually engage in commerce. So I'd like to see the, the option in front of us, whether we move forward or not. That's obviously gonna be a larger discussion, but...
The, I, I think about that, too, because, you know, obviously, we, we have people that are impacted. I'm an engineer, I should be able to solve these problems. And, and so...
You should.
Okay, yeah, okay. But, but I don't have any money to do anything with about it. But so, that's my excuse. No, but what I, what I have done is worked with the City-County Association of Government to put together a grant application for this urban greening plant. Well, what's an urban greening plant have to do with flooding? Well, it would say, it would re-engineer the storm drain system, and instead of all the water running down the street and into the gutter and out into the storm drain pipe, into the creeks, and the creeks overflow, it would sink slow and spread the storm water as close to the source as possible. So it would create green spaces in the streets that would make it more like the natural watershed.
Like it did in Seattle.
Portland is maybe, Portland is probably the best example. And, in fact, we're using it, the, the CCAG funded a consultant from Portland to write the grant application. It's a, it's a really handsome grant application, and we got it for free. They did it. And it's a $250,000 study, so we'll find out in September whether that, that money materializes or not. It would come from the state program, and the name is slipping my mind right now, but it's, it's basically the state's carrot to go along with the AB 32 stick that says, you know, yeah, we want you to address climate change, and here, here we're gonna put, put some money on the table for you to go out and get to, to deal with it. And I think we've got a really good chance at getting the grant because of the good work that's been done on the general plan and the climate action plan. So that's, that's all I can, I think that's at least a way forward on, on that issue.
John, any other questions? Mr. Griselli, comments?
Nothing.
Mr. Girlcott? So I just have, actually, no response. You just could record these when you come back with a budget and find out whether or not we should be doing it. I'll give you some thoughts on three or four items. One is the library area carpet. I, I thought that was on the list at one point. No, just, I, I don't even want a response, just when you come back to us, let us know. Second one is a little contrast to, to Mr. Klein, on, on the water recycling, 80,000. It scares me to have kids with what they do with that water, and then recycling it, and then the next kid, next day, is gonna be drinking that water, E. coli breakout or, or whatever, but leach field or whatever, but, but to spend a lot of money, just the whole concept of, of recycling in a, in a playground area scares me from a liability point of view, so be careful with that. Enhanced 911 system, phone system, really small item, with 25,000. I'd like to make sure that we research, well, current technology, I believe, is call on a landline, so they'll know where you are. Call on the cellphone, they're not gonna know where you are. Within a couple of years, I think the model's gonna change. Call on the cellphone, because they're gonna know where you are and how fast you're going, and by the way, turn it over, because the video will play and they'll show the paramedic what's going on, and you'll have a sensor, so the heart goes through the phone and tells them what your heart's doing. So I think the model, if we implement locating people in City Hall, may be out of date within a year or two. And I'd, I'd like to look ahead a little bit on where the technology is going, wireless versus land, before we spend any money. Again, no response, just look into it when you get back to us. Hey, let's, go ahead.
Just really briefly, because I think there may be a misunderstanding in terms of what the project is. Because we have our own voice-over internet phone system, what's happening is the, the systems that are at remote facilities, the phones that are out at the youth center and the adult community centers are a particular concern, all show up as City Hall. So when anybody dials 911 from one of our phones, it just tells the 911 operator to go to City Hall, as opposed to somebody at the adult community.
So I'm understanding it right. So the model will change. When, if, I have a problem here, are you gonna use a landline or a cellphone? I'd like to know what that answer's gonna be and where it's going, before we spend money on the landline stuff. And I think, and the Cranfield area, just a thought on that. We, we put a lot of effort, we didn't put much money in it a year ago, and of course, it was the complex project with Belmont on San Carlos Avenue Bike Lane and all that sort of stuff. Here we are, a, a year later. Since that time, I know Mr. Girlcott's made comments, questions on, I think it was a good idea, hey, what's going on with San Carlos Avenue? Is there anything that we could do with that? I know there's tremendous frustration from our TL charter school people. I think that project did not really focus and address the issues with the high school and the volume and the parking, and what are they doing for traffic and parking. So we could piecemeal it and do a little piece here. I'd rather just, I'm gonna have to post- I'd rather just, I mean, postpone it, take a break for a year, and go back and hit it hard when we do have money. I think the project, that area, within 100 yards of that area, I'm, you know, looking at, we might need to spend more money, and solving, what we could do in one little piece could, may help or may not help what we really should be doing if we had money on the larger piece. So, anyway, those are just my comments on, small comments on projects. Anything else? We have public comment. Celia, come on up, and I believe Roxanne Kelly and Robert Blake are gone. Okay. And I know you're from Cranfield, because you're in the farthest west corner of the building there, which is the northwest.
Right. Well, good evening, councilmembers. Clearly, I'm here for the Cranfield Avenue, the new project proposed by the TNC and presented by Robert Weil. And for 12 years, I've been talking to staff and the council about this project, and the neighborhood is very grateful that we finally had folks come out and listen to us, meet with us, respond to our emails, do an assessment, allow us to present to a commission. Clearly, I'm sure a lot of you remember, I went to BPAC a number of times. I was a member of BPAC, talked about, at the general plan, talked about it to various other staff, and it, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen. I clearly agree with you, Mayor Royce, that it's beyond one little neighborhood. You know, there are churches, there's a school, there's another city, but you know what? For the past 12 years, my neighborhood has also been battering those two entities, and Belmont thinks we're funny. I don't know what, you know, professionally, you think of their council, but, you know, they seem to think we should close off the whole street, as they did, you know, up the hill on Hallmark, you know, blocking off traffic, so people from San Carlos could go to the freeway that way. The high school says, oh, well, it's a city's problem. We can't control the traffic outside our boundaries. And as they're saying that, they're working with more and more churches and businesses to allow their students to park off-site. So, clearly, they're not addressing the issue either. I can appreciate, you know, they're adding a lot of facilities, Performing Arts Center, New Music Center, they're going to be adding a technology facility this summer. So, you know, it's not only rush hour traffic, it's also a lot more, lot more evening traffic because of all the nighttime programs they're having. So, you know, I would hate to see a child get killed, whether it's a TL child, whether it's a Carlmont High School child, but it's insane out there in the morning during rush hour. And, you know, and as Robert Weil said, you know, they're not driving fast, but they're driving pretty recklessly. So, I hope that you do consider, you know, this traffic study, and I think I speak on behalf of all of my neighborhood, and sorry, they couldn't stay tonight.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. Any other thoughts of staff on this item?
Just one...
Mr. Girlcott?
One quick comment, and that's with what Mr. Weil has done on the, I forgot the name of it now, but, you know, we talked about having a schedule for how to replace things and sinking fund and so forth, and what he's presented earlier on wasn't exactly that, but it gets close to it, and so I just wanted to appreciate the effort, where I see his responding to our retreats and the things that we've said at those retreats.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Thank...